Good evening and welcome to tonight's school committee meeting of Tuesday, February 15. We just exited executive session and we're now going to call our this meeting, this portion of the meeting to order. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. As we start every meeting, I'm going to read the mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident, lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. With that, we'll get to public comment. We have a number of people in studio. I just went over how we're going to do this. I'm going to call everybody up, kind of in an order that we had determined for anybody that let me know ahead of time. We've got a couple of people who signed in here. And then if there's anybody on Zoom who would like to speak, if you can, I don't know if they should chat or kind of raise their hand in the Zoom and the WCAT folks will let me know. So we are going to start with Alex. Alex, I'm going to ask that you come up and state your name and your address.
Hi, I am Alex McCarrawitz and I live at 53 Eustace F in Wakefield. Thank you all for allowing me to come and address you this evening. I am not going to waste your time telling you things you already know. You know the science and the facts behind masking. You know what districts around have already lifted the mask requirements for their schools. And you also know how our town council voted last night. What I am going to share with you tonight are the steps and actions that I plan on taking if we do not end the masking in our schools. First and foremost, when my kids go back after February vacation, I'm going to send them in without masks. Now, if they are not allowed into the building or while they're there, they are sent home, I plan on emailing the committee, the district, as well as the Board of Health to let you know and to keep track of every service that my children miss from their IEPs those days. So that way, as a group, you can help me keep track. So if those services need to be made up at a later date, they can be. I plan on continuing to educate, advocate, and support other parents, families, and students that feel the same way I do. Enough is enough. These children have complied. We have complied. It is time for the decision to be put back in our hands of what we feel is the right choice for our kids. I plan on participating in all respectful and peaceful protesting and marches that I promise you will take place if this masking continues. I also plan on continuing conversations with local advocates, as well as a family member of mine, who is a lawyer in Washington DC for the Department of Education. If need be, looking at different candidates to elect in April to fill the open positions on the school committee. Heck, if I could afford those fancy lawn signs and I thought people would vote for me, I'd throw my hat in the ring. But neither one of those would happen. And fore and foremost, I plan on taking the steps that I've already started. I've contacted the Massachusetts Department of Education to request the bonds, or the security bonds needed if we need to get to that step. I promise you, none of this is meant to be threatening or to be rude or disrespectful. I do not envy the position and the decisions that any of you have had to make over the past two years to guarantee the health and safety of our children. And I thank you for every decision you made because in the end, it did keep us safe. And our numbers are decreasing. And our numbers have not been the highest in the state or even in our surrounding area. But again, enough is enough and the decision needs to come back to us as the parents. Now, if things were to change, then it's a whole different conversation. But it needs to change and it has to enact when we come back from February vacation. Of course, I've heard every other rumor going around town of a potential date of March 20th, March 21st, something like that. We can't wait that long to enact this. It needs to enact now. And I really hope that you will take all of the parents and families and students that are in the studio today and on Zoom willing and ready to address and share their stories of why they feel the masking needs to end into consideration when you do vote tonight. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Irene? Irene, you're next, and then Greg.
Do you mind if I bring my kids up with me?
Not at all.
My name is Irene Oliver. We live at 2 Jessica Lane. My husband Ronnie, my oldest daughter Nina, she's at 5th grade at the Galvin, and Mia, 2nd grade at the Dolbear. The job of being a teacher, school administrator, parent, caregiver, or student has been exceptionally difficult these last two years. It is of the utmost importance to protect the mental, social, and emotional health of our children as parents. Children are experiencing unprecedented levels of anxiety, depression, and other mental health impacts. Not to mention, kids have missed a great deal of classroom time. For example, my youngest daughter Mia, she has no idea what a regular school day is or was because this all started for her in kindergarten. And because of that, she's experienced academic impacts. When we were seven and 10 years old, we had no idea what anxiety or stress meant. In the current world we live in, cancel culture is of the mindset, and it's deeply concerning that kids today know all about what these are and experience them on a daily basis. They shouldn't have to. They should enjoy being a kid. Now, don't get us wrong, bad things happen in the world and we talk about them with our children. We don't live in a bubble and neither do they. Now, for as to why we are here, parental choice. It's been two years. Cases are down. Vaccination rates are in a good place. We have our beliefs about what masks do not do, and that is, they do not protect our children. Not only do they not protect, but they also are hurting our children. Delayed speech, anxiety, depression, among other things. Our child got COVID from school with a mask on. We asked the school committee to vote in favor of parental choice when it comes to masks effective February 28th. Anything past this date is an abuse of power and doesn't align with what the rest of the world is doing right now. Also, many other states that have not used masks, their numbers rise and fall along the same curve as ours. Therefore, masks do not make an impact on COVID, but they do in many other negative ways. We are not sure if some of the school committee members forget, but according to your mission statement, your role is to educate our children, not to be health ministers. The children have suffered enough and deserve for this to end. Now is the time and the opportunity. What I'm saying is, as parents, one of the things we do to protect our children from harm and keep them safe, we make the best decision based on the information we have. We are not asking to drop masks completely. We know there are some in favor of keeping them, but that shouldn't apply across the board. It isn't one-sided, and quite frankly, we are tired of it being one-sided. Parental choice is a win for both. It should be respected on behalf of both parties. I unmask my kids, you mask yours, everybody wins. We don't look down upon you because you choose to mask. Neither do my kids. And you shouldn't look down on us for unmasking hours. And if you do, it doesn't bother us in the least. We can agree to disagree. Unfortunately, that doesn't happen these days, which is another problem, but we aren't asking you to fix that. We are asking that as of 28th February, the Wakefield community needs to be given the right to choose parental choice. We have learned a lot over the past two years. Mask mandates were quickly and swiftly put into place. We are in a different place now, and to that end, masking requirements should be removed just as quickly and swiftly. If we cannot stand up for our children, then our children will never know it's okay for them to stand up for themselves. Our children deserve more and they deserve for this to end. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Greg Spry, 14 Turnbull Avenue in Wakefield. Friends, masks do not stop COVID spread and they harm our children. There are three ways a school committee member told me they are aware of how they harm them. For our youngest learners, the ability to read social cues. For our elementary, our early elementary kids, struggles with learning to read. For our older kids, difficulty in social situations and making connections with teachers. This committee is openly aware of these facts, yet they sit before us tonight contemplating dragging this out. This is not a deadly virus to the children, but it has been lethal to their education and mental health. These kids don't get this time back. Every day counts. May I remind you that you are charged with their educational welfare, and it is the parents that are charged with the health and well-being. For months, I've been a proponent for removing masks, and for months, I have been told, listen to Desi. Are you ready to take your own advice now? Because Desi has said masks come off the 28th. Any delay beyond this date will be an abuse of power by this school committee, which unfortunately, they have a history of for those of us who remember the logo fiasco. Please do not make excuses tonight. Do not cite February break as this will tell us that you don't believe in your new testing program. For once, I'd actually prefer you to say, listen to Desi, who said masks can come off the 28th. Tell us tonight, parents, we hear you, we trust you, and it's your choice as of March 1st. If what has been hinted at is true, at the end of the day, I'm probably arguing over a couple of weeks. Then again, that's what started all this in the first place. Two weeks to slow the spread, I was told. Fool me once. Before I yield, I would like to politely remind everyone how we fix this long-term. We fix this in April and November at the voting booth. We need a committee that will act in line with the majority. Regardless of tonight's outcome, we need to say focused on the long run. To keep the masks off our kids, we need to act before the next wave hits. We need to act this April in Wakefield with our votes. Pardon my healthy skepticism, but it wasn't too long ago that our town voted in a non-binding way to alert this school committee of the town's majority intention to retain our logo. Despite the majority opinion, the school committee told us they know better. That slap in the face was our warning sign about the character of the committee as a whole. The derailment of our children's education and emotional well-being cannot happen again with masks in the fall with the inevitable increase in this seasonal virus. Okay, it will creep up again. We need loyal servants who act in accordance with the will of the parents. I respectfully ask you tonight, do not extend the mandate. Stop dragging down otherwise healthy children. We need to elevate everyone. To our friends who want to keep wearing masks, do it. We love you. Every step of the way. How will you know this? You will see us smiling right back at you. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Christine?
My name's Christine Nelson. I live at 129 Oak Street. I appreciate this opportunity to speak to the school committee members, the assistant superintendent, the superintendent, and the members of our community. This is a picture of my son Nicholas and my daughter Lauren. They're Woodville Bears, and I'm here for them. When COVID first hit, my daughter was in preschool, my son was in kindergarten. They were forced to stay home from school. They were told by us, the school and the state, it would be two weeks to flatten that curve. And the next, school was canceled for the rest of the year. They were forced to go to Zoom school for an education. Their parks were closed. Their extracurricular activities were closed. Their favorite restaurants, closed. Family, friends, closed. Last year, our kids were so happy to return to school, even if it was halftime and learning on a computer. My daughter hated kindergarten. As a former teacher, those words killed me. Kindergarten is supposed to be fun, and instead, it was mask up, sit and stand six feet apart. You can't use those toys, only your toys. You can't share. Wait, they can't share? This is a huge part of kindergarten. The biggest learning takes place on a rug for morning meeting. There's no rug. Morning meeting in the traditional, canceled. Centers, canceled. Playing house, that was canceled too. And they didn't know it because all of these things were moved to a storage bin. All the toys, small group tables, canceled. Small group instruction, one-to-one reading assessment, et cetera, canceled. My daughter hated school because school was not fun. She couldn't learn to read because in her words, mama, I can't see the teacher's lips and I can't hear her speak. Her words to anyone who asked about school, I hate school. The reasoning, the reason I'm mentioning my daughter the most is because my son had September to March 13th to get the fundamentals of reading, writing, and math, along with learning to interact with his peers. He learned to share, turn-taking, and most of all, he learned empathy, and he learned about feelings because he could see facial expressions. On February 28th, 2022, these children would have been masked for 717 days. Not the two weeks to flatten the curve with 100 days Biden promised. My kids were a statistic on the weekly update from the school because they had COVID January 1st. We have complied for 717 days of mandates and masks. Desi and Governor Baker have both chosen not to extend the mask mandates and left it to the towns. The school committee should not be the ones deciding on health decisions. This should be a parent choice at this point. If the school committee votes to extend this mask mandate past February 22nd, uh, 28th, will those two weeks turn into two months, the rest of the school year extended to next year, the year after? These are my children, mine. My husband and I have had every single medical decision from the moment we found out I was pregnant. We chose the doctor, we chose the hospital, we chose the tests that would be done early on in my pregnancy. We chose their pediatrician, we chose their preschool, and now we need to choose whether masks should be worn. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Christine. Dawn?
Hello, my name is Dawn Millward. I reside at 18 Emerald Street. I come, first of all, thank you Doug and, hi, Maura, for your, Mrs. Maura, for your weekly COVID updates. They have been very beneficial. I've enjoyed going to them and they've provided a lot of information. School committee, thank you for allowing us to come here tonight and speak. But tonight, I speak in front of you as a special education teacher that has been in COVID since day one. When other teachers were teaching from Zoom, I was in the building because I work with the most significant children and learning loss. I also am a mother, and today, I'm speaking as a mother. As a parent of two children at the Galvin Middle School, I believe it's time to remove masks for those that want to. It is time for choice. It is time for parents to decide what is best for their children. It is time to see kids smile again. It's time for teachers to teach kids how to read and see how they are producing sounds. It's time for normalcy. As a vaxxed, masked, and family that has been impacted by COVID, enough is enough. The governor lifted the mask mandate. As of February 28th, Desi will lift the mask requirement, which we have followed up until this time. That should speak volumes. It should now be up to parents, students, and teachers as to whether or not they want to continue to wear a mask. I truly feel that if, as a school committee and administration, you continue to require masks, you should personally feel responsible for continuing to stifle students' mental health, anxiety, learning difficulties, and overall, overall well-being. If the numbers were not trending down, this wouldn't be an issue right now. We have access to vaccines. We've all been allowed to do what we've wanted as to, as parents, if we wanted to mask or get vaxxed. The mandate would not be lifted if the governor and Desi did not think it was time. It should no longer be left up to the school committee or administration to decide what is best for our children. Thank you for your time. I do hope this school committee and administration, like so many towns already have and are in the process of following the governor's mandating and unmasking our children. Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. Jackie?
Jefflin Spry, 14 Turnbull Ave. Thank you, guys, for this enormous commitment of your time. I know just preparing this took a lot of time. I can only imagine what you've read. For those of you not aware, Massachusetts is one of only 13 states that requires masks on schoolchildren. Masks that I feel we cannot say with certainty work. Why do I believe that? Because this box that my children wear, of masks that my children wear every day, says the following. "These masks are not personal protective equipment and are not intended as replacements or substitutes for personal protective equipment. These products are not intended for medical use or to prevent any disease or illness." This is a clear indication to me that these masks, like the majority of those worn by students and staff, are for compliance only. For those here tonight or listening at home who fear what will happen when the mask mandate is lifted, have faith. Of the top 10 states with the lowest mortality rate, eight of them do not have mask mandates on their schoolchildren. That is significant. In addition, their survival rate of children ages 0 to 17 is 99.99%. That's essentially 100%. I can say with confidence that the mental health and learning loss of our children is a far greater risk to this population. And I say that because I've witnessed it with my own kids. I have four children in the Wakefield school system. My 2nd grader struggles with reading, a problem that the majority of educators agree is attributable to wearing masks. My 4th grader has a severe phobia of vomiting, and wearing a mask causes her to overheat and feel ill. I all but carry her to the school door every day, and when she gets to class, she has a fan on her desk in an attempt to keep her comfortable. That same daughter recently auditioned for a choral opportunity, and when I realized she was singing the wrong word in one part, I mentioned it to her music teacher. The response, it's the masks. My 8th grader, straight A student all through middle school, in advanced math, yet she barely scored average on MCAS and the recent high school placement test she took. You can see the negative effects run the gamut. These kids not only deserve a return to normalcy, as recognized by Desi in their decision to lift the mask mandate, they need a return to normalcy. And you sit here tonight with the ability to grant them that. Thank you.
Thanks, Jackie. Justin? Justin may be down the hall. Do you guys see anybody coming down the hall? Is Shayna in here?
Oh, that's me. I think we just signed in because we were signing in. I don't have a whole reason to say, but it's great.
If you, if you didn't plan to say anything, you're good. If you'd like to, you can step up to the table and say something, but I-
I'll say something real quick, just because now I feel like I'm on the squad, but I don't have anything else to say. Sorry, I just broke an ankle. No, no, I actually didn't come prepared to say anything. I came to support my friend Irene, who I think said something great. And actually, everybody who's spoken tonight has said something great. My name's Shayna Reed. I live at 27 Lakeview. And so I wish I came more prepared with facts and all of that, but so many of you have given that. But what I can give you is an anecdotal statement of my own experience. I'm sitting here and I'm wearing a mask because I know that's what we're supposed to do, and that's what you've asked us to do. And I'm very respectful of what we need to do to keep everybody safe and to get through this. But as many have said, it's been two and a half years, and we need to find the right time to start trying to get back to some normalcy and start recognizing when does the protection of the few, when is that more important than other, other things that are affecting the masses, which is, some people have mentioned depression rates, suicide rates, all of these things are on the rise. But I can also speak to my own children. My son comes home every day with a wet mask because he chews it all day because he has sensory things. And he, he's like, oh, that's great. Like, I'm just chewing it. I'm like, it's, it's wet. It's, he said to me the other day, I'm like, Nathan, where's your mask? Like, you know, you, you need a mask to go to school. And I had all these, you know, paper ones. And he's like, I don't like the paper ones. I like the cloth ones. And he literally, this is so gross to say, but he went to my car, and I haven't used the car in forever because I can't drive because I have a broken ankle. And somehow, some way, it was stuck in like a ketchup packet, had all ketchup on the front. And he's like, I'm just gonna wear this one. And literally would have walked out the door and I'm like crutching after him, like, you're not taking that mask with ketchup on it. Because this, what is this? What is this? These masks are on the floor. They're wearing them halfway down. They're not, they're chewing on them. There are other things that are happening to these kids. And then my daughter, who's in kindergarten, so that's just, you know, middle school, you know, weird hygiene issues. My daughter's in kindergarten and she's having the same thing. She's, so I just got her report card and her teacher told me, these are words that she's having trouble saying. And this is serious. She's not having trouble saying these words. I have had her, she's been, she has a speech impediment. She has a lisp. And all through preschool, she was evaluated by speech pathologists, and they said she has no issues with speaking. She has no issues, but sometimes the way she formulates words, they come out differently. So now, her, her school is telling me she has trouble reading, she has trouble speaking. And when we had her evaluated by an independent- And when we had her evaluated by an independent person, they said, "No, she's not having trouble. Maybe it's the mask. Maybe it's the way that they're seeing her formulate the word." She's now working with a reading specialist at school. And I look at the words that they send home every week that they tell me she can't say. She can say them. They just can't tell that she can say them. So these are things that maybe kids are being misdiagnosed with things. Or maybe kids are being missed at the, you know, resources that they need to be successful. And that, to me, if, if somebody wants to choose, "Hey, I want my child to be able to interact and be able to see facial expressions and for their teachers to be able to see how they're saying things when they have impediments that the mask is making worse," then maybe it's the time, like many have said already tonight, for parents to make the choice whether we feel that they should be wearing them or... And I have no problem with who, if you want to keep wearing them. Like, I forget this gentleman's name, but like he said, "We'll smile right back at you." Wear them, don't wear them, but at, at some point, it has to be our choice again. I didn't have anything written, but I hope that was okay.
Mary and Amy, you guys want to come up? Justin did not, did Justin show up?
I'm actually right here. I'm her, I'm his, I'm sorry, her cousin.
And you're good?
Yeah.
All right, Amy, or, well, Mary and Amy.
Good evening. My name is Mary Young.
My name is Amy Young.
We are from 49 Essex Street. Most of you have already met us or heard from us in some fashion. I thank each and every one of you for being here tonight. This is not an easy decision. Trust me, being a parent, there's a lot of not easy decisions that are made. However, we come to you with a plea for the mental health of our children. And unfortunately, it's not just mine. We've had a very rough two years. We've had long lists of doctors given to us, licensed mental health counselors given to us, constant phone calls that were not returned. Doctors that called back and said, "Sorry, we're not taking patients." Thank God we've found resources and thank God for the Galvin and their administrators. I know Andrew Tetralt is not a mental health counselor, but thank God he always answers the phone or has no problem walking my son through the halls when he's having a breakdown because he feels like he's being suffocated. And my daughter has a few things of her own to say.
Throughout the past few years, I have had derealization, which is a mental, like, brain disorder that makes you feel like you're sort of like in a dream. Many people might have felt this before for a few seconds, but due to like anxiety and depression from these masks, I have definitely felt them for half an hour to maybe an hour at a time. And my therapist, I've been talking to her about it, of ways to bring it down and to not have it as often. And we're still trying to figure out ways to get rid of it for good.
She's being told by her licensed medical health counselor that masks breaks. Our essential, fresh air is essential. She's not athletic, anybody who knows my kid. She doesn't like sports in any fashion whatsoever. She's being told, "Get out and run. Have that fresh air." She misses the smiles of everyone in the Galvin that she trusts. We miss Doug's smile, don't we? We were just talking about that the other day. It's going to be better for the health of our children, our mental health, to be able to see them walking out of school with a smile on their face instead of tearing their mask off like it's a bra and flinging it into the nearest cup holder and literally saying to mom, "School sucked today." That is not something I want to hear. I love my children. I love my neighbors' children. I used to substitute in our school district. I loved being in the classroom with our kids and seeing how happy they are. Right now, the general consensus is they're not happy. They're going through the motions. And under that kind of stress, you don't learn. And I want the learning to come back. I want the smiles to come back. And it needs to happen sooner than later.
When we had online school, I don't remember really much that I learned because going over the screens with all of the lagging, I was not able to learn really anything. No matter how much the teacher tried. Once we went hybrid, two days in-person, three days online, I learned a lot more when we were in-person than online.
Are we done? Thank you.
Al Roycroft was out in the reception area and he was questionable. So I want to give him a chance if he wants to.
He was reading a newspaper when that happened. There he is.
Oh, that's Ian. Nope, that's Ian. And Ryan, this is, that was the end of my list. Are there people on the Zoom?
Madam Chair, I'll give them a moment if they want to raise their hands on the Zoom and I'll call on them. But so far, nobody has raised their hand.
Okay. Do we have Al coming down the hallway? Or is he all set? Okay.
Well, I believe he, he just came to me and said that he was not, he no longer had interest in speaking. He was the one who spoke to you earlier, right?
Yep. So he's all set?
Yeah, he said, he said, he said he was all set. He didn't speak.
Okay. Anybody raise their hand on the Zoom?
Nobody, nobody has raised their hand yet. No.
Okay. So we are going to move on from public comment then. Thank you all for your comments. Thanks, everybody, for being cooperative in the studio. Appreciate that. I, I do want to just say for the people who are tuned in, we have 25 or so people here in the studio with, I'm not sure exactly how many people are out in the, in the reception area, but I would probably put another five or 10, just so that people have a, a sense of kind of how many people showed up. Because I think it's important for people to know that. Okay, we're going to move on to, um, do we have any student advisory representatives on tonight? Do we have like Sophia or?
Hi.
Oh, there we go, Maggie. Maggie, where are you? Looks like you're in like the...
I'm at work.
You look like you're in the freezer.
I'm in the back. I work at Dairy Queen, so.
Oh, okay. All right. Maggie, give us an update.
Yes, today is me and Bella, so I'm going to do academics and then some athletics and visual stuff, and then Bella's going to do everything else. So for academics, Revolution Prep is a company offering a free proctored practice SAT on Saturday, March 5th. So if you see Principal McLeod's Weekly Update, it's from this past Sunday and it will have more information about that for you guys, if anyone's interested in that. And then our winter sports season is wrapping up and many of our teams have qualified for the MIAA State Tournament. I'm not really sure which ones off the top of my head. I know girls' basketball has, and then track has their state tomorrow. So that's exciting. I know definitely more teams are in there, too.
Perfect. And Bella?
Okay, so for continuing what Maggie was saying, this past weekend, the Wakefield High School Wrestling Team won the MIAA Division III North Sectional Championship. Seniors Nick Roberto and Nathan Ickes were individual champions in their respective weight classes. Head Coach Ross Ickes recently won his 400th career victory and he was named MIAA Division III North Coach of the Year. Boys and Girl Track will compete at MIAA States tomorrow in Boston and are both expected to do amazingly well. And for some other school news and timely happenings, the World Language Department is organizing an international trip to France and Spain from April 14th to April 21st, 2023. All World Language students from WHMS classes of 2023 and 2024 are welcome to attend. Please reach out to Mrs. Manzi with any questions or concerns.
All right. Any questions for our liaisons, guys? Okay, thanks for...
Sue's banking.
Oh, hold on a second.
Just that comment about the, I know Mrs. Manzi, the World Language curriculum coordinator, was hoping to come to one of our March school committee meetings. I think it was the 15th, just to give the committee more information about that great trip opportunity, so.
Okay.
Just wanted to let you know that.
So we'll have her on an upcoming agenda, the 8th? Okay, so that, because we have not been briefed on that one yet.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Bye.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, Tom, we've got the consent agenda?
We do. I move the school committee approve the minutes of February 8, 2022, school committee meeting, and accept the minutes of February 1, 2022, school committee policy and communications subcommittee meeting, the minutes of February 2, 2022, school committee student services subcommittee, and the minutes of the February 3, 2022, school committee finance and facilities subcommittee, as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? All opposed?
Jesus Christ, how is this?
Um, okay, so...
Concern about the minutes, Madam Chairs?
So I have no comments as a chairperson. And so we're gonna, I'm gonna hand it over to Superintendent Lyons.
Thank you very much. So I'd like to start off, is Florence going to speak?
Florence is going to speak after Anthony does.
Okay, great. So, good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for being here. Before I get started, I'd like to thank our student liaisons for, for reporting tonight. I also want to give a shout out to Zach, Joe, and Nick, who are kind enough to email me right after the Super Bowl advocating for a snow day. Appreciate their advocacy. Sorry, we couldn't come through. Not enough snow, gentlemen. But appreciate the email just the same. So just a, a quick update in regard to COVID reporting. Currently in the district, we have 28 positive cases with 10 students in quarantine. And at this point, we are going to invite Anthony, who's joining us via Zoom, Anthony Choi, who is our Director of Board of Health, to, to give a quick update in, in regard to COVID. So, Ry, can you see Anthony?
Yeah, I'm at work.
No worries. So Anthony Choi will, will be joining us in a moment? Not on? Okay. So our Director of Board of Health was, was going to join us this evening just to kind of give his perspective on where he believes that we are with COVID and to try to give some guidance in relation to town council. Yes?
Don, can I make a suggestion? I think it's important Anthony's on. Can we see if we can get ahold of him? And maybe hold off on that one for a little bit longer?
Absolutely. I was just kind of moving on just to, to give him a minute. But I can, I think I can shoot him a text.
Okay.
If I, if I may, the...
Catherine's on here.
The Melrose Board of Health is, is meeting tonight. I believe he's at that. But he'll be late, but probably with us soon.
Catherine seems like she might have something to add. No?
Hi, Catherine.
Hi, I just reached out to Anthony to see if he could jump on. But as Mr. Markham said, he is also dealing with the, juggling the Melrose School Committee meeting. So we'll get him on soon.
Thank you so much. I think at this point, I, I could jump down to safe routes.
Yep, and we'll come back.
And we can jump back to COVID. Hey, Lauren. Hi, Judy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right.
We have all of our student reps from Youth Council. Good to see everybody this evening.
All right, may I begin?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I'm sorry, there was a, a pause. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Judy Cocker, the statewide lead and seniors outreach coordinator for the Massachusetts Safe and Secure School Program. And I serve the town of Wakefield. Would it be possible to bring up my PowerPoint presentation? Or would you like me to do it?
I, I believe Ryan can do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan, wherever you are.
We have field trips and we've got Wakefield.
You should, okay. Did, did, um, did, did we share? Judy, do you want to...
I can put it up myself if that's easier.
Um, I think he can make that happen. Just give him one moment, please.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Certainly.
But truly, thank you for your time tonight. I know there's a lot going on. It's also budget season, so I like to call myself a friendly agenda item, if you would. So we're just going to talk a little bit about what the Safe and Secure program is, what we've been doing in the town of Wakefield, and possible next steps. I'm very pleased tonight, working with Catherine Dinger. They have members of the Wakefield Youth Council.
Judy?
Yes.
You should have privilege now to share your screen.
Okay. Okay, can you see my screen?
We can.
Terrific. Okay, let me get to the first one. And here we go. Okay, thank you so much for this. All right. So, um, the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Safe and Secure School Program is a free federally funded, grades K-8 program that works to increase safe biking and walking. We use a collaborative, community-focused approach that bridges that gap between health and transportation. It, Safe and Secure Schools is an international program and it's in all 50 states. And we serve about 65% of Massachusetts schools that participate. So no matter how your student arrives and departs school, safety is our priority. Safe and Secure is not a one-size-fits-all program. It really depends on what your local needs are. We customize our services to you based on what those needs are. Listed here are some of the common reasons why folks might require our services. We also are not a stay-in-your-lane program. So as much as everything we do is centered around schools, public schools and public charter schools, and everything that we do is kind of, in quotes, owned by the school system, we equally work with the municipality in general, the engineering, planning, DPW, et cetera, and the community, such as the Wakefield Youth Commission, MassEmotion, et cetera. Often what we do is what I like to call the chicken and the egg, though. So many times we hear parents say that, "I don't want my child walking or biking to school even though we don't live that far away because this is too much traffic and we don't feel it's safe." So what do they do? They get in their car and they're part of the problem. That's the chicken and the egg. Our program has a public health foundation that utilizes what we call the six E's. Those are listed here in the center of the screen. I'm going to briefly go over those for you. Under evaluation, we pretty much look at where your students live and how they can best get to school. So we do a lot of mapping. We have two different processes for doing our mapping. One can be a parent travel survey. Again, this is available in nine languages. It's a quick survey. And the other way that we can do this is asking for scrub student attendance data. So with that, which is the map you see on the far left, we actually are able to put, just to drop a pin where the student lives using this anonymous data. And then we look at where the students live from a half mile, mile, mile and a half, and two miles out from the school. Using that information, we can create a walking and biking route map, which is in the next slide, in the next, the map. On this particular map, we can either place walking school buses, which is, you know, basically you leave your house, pick up a friend, pick up another friend. Today, they give everything a name. We call that a walking school bus. We can also use these maps to identify what we call park and walk locations. We're trying to lessen the congestion in and around the school zone. So this might be a local street, a park, a church parking lot with permissions, just different areas where people might be able to park. So at the end of the day, too, we just try to celebrate how our students get to school. And we have lots of fun ways of doing that, which is what we call encouragement, how we celebrate how our students get to school. The state has three flagship events that we celebrate across the state. International Walk to School Day in October, Winter Walk, which is a couple weeks ago in February, and Massachusetts Walk to School Day in May. which is a couple weeks ago in February, and Massachusetts Walk to School Day in May. We have a deep library of low-cost, no-cost ideas on how to best celebrate. Picture you see here is Crazy Soft Day. It doesn't get more basic than that. And this is also where we might suggest forming a task force. You know, where do Safe Foods live in your community? Is it in the PTOs? Is it with the police? Is it with the local Y? In every community, it might look a little different. So some of the upcoming Safe Foods School events around encouragement, we have our annual lawn sign contest, which starts right after February break. The theme this year is actually walking school buses and student route maps, just how your student gets to school with their friends. Last year, which is shown here, was addressed to be seen. We also have our third networking call, middle of next month. The theme is, "How do you start a walking school bus? How do you start a bike train?" And these are calls where people just want to network and connect with each other, and we do not record these or take the transcripts. It's basically just a, "Let's have a conversation." We also have our annual crossing guard appreciation day, which comes out again next month. And that's where you can nominate your favorite crossing guard. For engineering, we have two different modes. We have what we call an arrival dismissal observation. That's where we examine what happens on school property and in the school zone. We take note of how your modes of transportation might be separated, what type of signage you use, how do you use your front door, and just the general flow. On the right, we have what we call the walk audit. And so if the red circle is the school, this is the journey from home to school for your student. We look at the neighborhoods and what we see in that transit route. For engagement, we actually take what we see during these arrival dismissal observations, and we actually come up with a plan. We also have crossing guard resources, and we work with the police on many different levels with this. Pictured here is a bike assembly. The police had actually asked us to come in and talk about one particular intersection where there were some issues. And so the police came in, spoke for a few minutes, and then we pretty much shook over. So dealing with an arrival dismissal plan, this is one that we've done for the Woodville. As you can see, our plan is actually one piece of paper, front and back. One is a map, as you see here. So basically, we're trying to, again, separate your modes of transportation, trying to use colors and a map to show you what you should be doing and what you shouldn't be doing. The backside of this would be text, where we go line by line for all different modes of transportation, what to do, what entrance of the school to use, and we try to include the bell schedule or the school hours. Education, we spend a lot of time of education. Everything we do is DESI-approved, including we have professional development that has been accredited by DESI. So our two forms are pedestrian safety. And this is kind of like civics. It's a life skill, just trying to bring it back. Sidewalk, crosswalk, and parking lot safety, these are all held outdoors. We recommend grades two, three. That being said, we can elevate the program for K through eight. Bike safety, we do not have a bike for every child, so this is more an assembly versus skill space. And we do personal safety, bike safety, and rules of the road. So what you see in front of you is some of our curriculum materials, videos, and just instructional design. In the middle is, is actually a still shot of us doing a bike assembly virtually. Part of our education is also geared toward parents. And the main thing we try to educate parents about is that you are not in traffic, you are the traffic. So here are some photos we took at the Woodville School in 2020 when we did an arrival dismissal observation. For example, there was a lot of parking where it is restricted and definitely posted, no parking, which is on the left. I actually witnessed an accident at dismissal where a parent from, or a guardian from the Woodville exited onto Farm Street and actually hit another car pretty significantly. And then on the right, you can see that, you know, a parent was just dropping off a student wherever they wanted to, and it's definitely not in the safe area or one that is suggested or recommended by the school. We also did the same for the Galvin. On your left, you can see just pretty much the line of cars, which is on Sittino Street. And a school bus actually has to straddle the median line just to pass the queue traffic. You can see the crossing guard there. In the center photo, that's coming from the other direction, you can see that white car pretty much stopped right on the crosswalk even though there is 50 or 60 kids crossing. You can also see, I don't know if you can see my cursor, along, if I'm coming from downtown area with the MVT bus, this is the queue of cars trying to enter. And then all up and down on the opposite side of the street are more cars trying to just take up their children. So that the neighborhood on this entire side, there's many of the businesses around the Galvin and condo or apartment buildings actually have posted private parking and "Please don't park." We also do an approximate modal count. This is it for the Galvin. This is, it took me a couple days to do this because of people coming from so many different directions. But you can see in the morning, almost 500 cars. And you can see in the afternoon, just over 400 cars. At the Woodville, I had 120 in the morning and about 110 in the afternoon. So this, these numbers are not insignificant. So for parents, we actually have three different driver education tip sheets, if you would. Each are available in nine languages. We have arrival dismissal, being a bike-friendly driver, and driving in the school zone. Equity is the last E that we work on. We've actually partnered with MAS-C, and we've created some wellness policy amendments and to try to incorporate active transportation into the wellness policy. Every child has to arrive and depart school, and it didn't exist anywhere in any policy. And so this is where partnering with MAS-C, we decided to put it. We do a lot of things in multiple languages. We work with students of all abilities. And we do a lot with sustainability and equity within our program. To that point, on the upper right, it's just an example. So for example, I've done recently a pedestrian safety and bike safety at the Woodville last fall, but I haven't done it at the other elementary schools. And so it's not equitable that way, that those students receive the benefit of the program and not the others. And we always get the question, "Where's the money?" So Safe Foods has two different infrastructure-funded programs. One is called Signs and Lines. This would be regulatory signage and pavement marking. It's more of a mini-grant, but it's a quick install. It happens during the school year. This is a list of the awardees for this particular year. And we also have a large infrastructure grant, which is really where the big bucks are, if you would, besides complete streets policies. We just awarded nine projects in 2022. Those awards just were, came out last week or the week before. And these are much larger. There must be sidewalk installation. It might be different type of traffic lights. The bikes facilities, as well as pedestrian facilities, et cetera. So what's been going on in Wakefield? So Wakefield has been a partner with the program, meaning that you're welcome to receive our program benefits. All the schools signed on at a different time, so the range was really 2008 to 2013. You do have complete streets policies. And in 2020, I think it was Albion Street, all these Safe Foods boxes were actually checked off on that, which is wonderful. You have strong advocates and the Safe Streets Working Group, the Wakefield Youth Commission here tonight, and Massinmotion. Many, most of the elementary schools were actually regular participants in those flagship events. They might do the Fall Walk, the October Walk, and the May Walk. Been very busy at the Woodville and a little bit at the Galvin during COVID. Woodville, we did a walk audit, where we had many different folks from the community attend. We did an arrival dismissal observation and some planning, as well as education. And at the Galvin, we did an arrival dismissal observation just before they broke for the summer. Also addressed the back-to-school night at the Woodville. And that's when we did this fall some pedestrian and bike education for the students. So it's a lot of information. But we do have some suggestions for where we'd like to take the next step for the Safe Foods program. I'm going to try to have conversations with the different schools about creating possibly a town-wide Safe Foods Task Force. This can look as any direction that the community wants it to. It can be a subcommittee, say, of the Safe Streets Working Group. It can be, it can be just a PTA-type, PTO-type group, et cetera. It's just someplace where folks can network and troubleshoot and, and just communicate to each other about what all the different schools are doing. And so everyone's on the same page. We do recommend, for the school committee, I'd love to speak with your policy subcommittee and talk about the MAS-C-partnered wellness amendments that we have authored. Would also strongly suggest that the district consider professional development for your health and wellness faculty for the pedestrian and bike safety curriculum. You know, this is your typical 10-hour course. However, obviously, the 10 hours are not all in person, and it definitely is, the different modules are very user-friendly, we've been told. I have had conversations recently with Bill Renaud from Planning Engineering about the master plan that is newly undertaken in Wakefield. And he is very excited to possibly have student route mapping done for the elementary and middle schools. And this would help forward his, his base mapping considerably. Because Wakefield has a neighborhood model for their schools, this would actually just give you a representative around the community of what different walking and biking routes would be. So, so, and I would like to say that the Youth Council members, many are here tonight. They've been doing a lot of work with no idling and some other biking and pedestrian safety initiatives, and excited that you actually have a student rep on the master plan. So at the end of the day, it's all about the kiddos. So just how we celebrate our student commuters and keeping them as safe as we can. That is my presentation. And I'd love to answer any questions, or the Youth Commission can.
Go ahead, Amy. Thanks, Judy.
So I'm glad to hear that you've talked to Bill Renaud about that. My suggestion was going to be to talk to Town Council and Erin Kokinda about that. Because, you know, along with the master plan, that's something that's, that's going to be happening with all the development that's coming and the population that's going to be probably growing pretty soon, that this is going to be impacting a lot more people. So I think it's a great idea to have kind of all those boards involved so that we can keep this going and keep, you know, kids coming from every direction safe. So thank you for all the work you guys have done.
Thank you.
Catherine, did you want to have the, the Youth Council members introduce themselves real quick?
Yeah, so I'm Catherine Dingra. I work at the Health Department and am lucky enough to be the advisor to the Wakefield Youth Council. And I just want to thank Judy for, when one of our Youth Council members reached out last year to do the walk audits. She responded wholeheartedly, and we were able to do those walk audits in the dismissal time, looking at those, because that was a deep concern of the Youth Council. And I just thank her for her response. And we have been having engineering involved, community development. So it's been a team effort here in Wakefield, and I appreciate that. So I'll have the Youth Council members that are here, that are involved in this initiative, just introduce themselves.
I'll go first. Hi, my name is Lauren Boyce. I'm a senior at Wakefield High, and I'm very lucky to be the chair of the Wakefield Youth Council. I'd like to echo what Catherine said about Mrs. Crocker. She is doing amazing and difficult work, but it's absolutely necessary to getting everybody to school safely and creating accessible ways for us to do so. So thank you, Mr. Crocker.
Hello, my name is Ali Atri, and I am a freshman at the, at the WMHS. And I also want to reiterate what Lauren said. And I also remember a presentation that Ms. Crocker gave last year in front of the Youth Council. I think that the work that you do is very important to all of the students in this town. And I, and I hope that Youth Council can continue our partnership to make sure that this, that this important work gets done.
Hi, I'm Madeline Napier. I am a, I'm an eighth grader at the Galvin Middle School. And again, like, like Ellie and Lauren just said, thank you so much, Mrs. Crocker, like, for helping keep us safe. And this is such an important initiative, so thank you.
I'm Nicholas Walczewski. I'm an eighth grader at the Galvin Middle School. I'd also like to echo what the other Youth Council members have said. I'd like to thank you for your important work, Ms. Crocker.
Awesome.
Well, I should come to these meetings more often, because this is great for my ego, so thank you all. So I think perhaps in closing, you know, unless you have questions, you know, you have the slide deck, perhaps, to the committee and to Mr. Lyons, I'll just send an email just with those suggested bullets that I had toward the end, particularly because I have had that conversation with Bill Renaud for the master plan. I'll give you some more details about how we could make the maps work. It's not a heavy lift, but just a little explanation. And look forward to more fun work in, in Wakefield.
Judy, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just one really quick comment. You know, again, kind of just to follow up on what's already been said. I think this is really important work, and I thank all those that have already been involved, particularly involved with some of the, the great things that have been going on. Ms. Lehman, Mr. Ingalls, and I serve as members of our subcommittee on policy and communication. So I jotted down the MAS-C wellness policy. So we can definitely be in touch and talk about maybe a future meeting as a subcommittee to take that on and to review and to see if it's something that we'd like to move forward with as, as an entire school committee. So thanks for drawing our attention to that as well.
Well, thank you. I'll look up your email, and I'll send you the link to those amendments.
Perfect, thank you.
But, you know, if you want me to come to a subcommittee meeting, it'd be my pleasure.
Excellent, thank you.
Judy, thank you so much. We will be in touch to, to schedule a time when we can connect after break, okay?
Terrific. Thank you, and happy, we're already here again. Happy winter break.
Happy winter break. And to our Youth Council and Catherine Dingra, thank you so much.
Thanks for coming.
It's always great to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, we're gonna back up. If we have Anthony.
We do.
There he is.
Good evening, Anthony. I know you're juggling meetings tonight. Thank you for being here. You just came from the Melrose meeting, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. We just wanted to kind of give you an opportunity just to kind of give your perspective as, as Director of the Board of Health.
Sure, that sounds good. First of all, I'll say thank you to everybody for being so flexible. You know, just a little bit of timing going on here in terms of being in one meeting and another. So again, I appreciate, you know, going out of order here, discuss this important matter. One of the things I wanted to go over tonight is part of the recommendation that we had, that we had put forth to discuss the mask mandate for schools. Our recommendation is for the mask mandate to continue until March 21st in light of the recent announcement by DESI, the DSE, regarding the lift of masks on the 28th. And so there's a couple of things I wanted to go over. And I want to first acknowledge that this is by no means an easy decision. I think the school committee that is considering this, and Doug, that have been working on this day in and day out, I want to make sure that everybody understands this is by no means an easy decision. And it's, it's an important one, and I really appreciate all the important work that everybody here puts into this. One of the things that we currently are looking at in terms of the reason why we're, we're optimistic, we're optimistic that we are getting to a point where we can safely, where we can safely start scaling back some of these measures that have been in place since the beginning of the pandemic. One of the things I want to stress is that we've been seeing a decreasing positivity rate in Wakefield since early January. Currently, we are at 7.5% positivity rate. This is the lowest it's been in quite a while. I believe this is... I believe this is about the same level as the pre, pre-surge for the break and the return from break. And so part of the cautious optimism that we have right now is that even though this data is not fully complete, it is only the PCR testing that is being logged in at the state level, we, it is an encouraging sign. We are seeing hospitalizations and deaths also decrease in the state of Massachusetts as well as locally. And so another, you know, another good metric as to, as to show where we are at this point. One of the things I wanted to stress is the reason we have mask mandates in the first place, whether that be for schools or for the general community, it's important for us to take into account hospital capacity in our local area. And so not only is this in relation to COVID hospitalizations, this is also in relation to those beds that are crucial for other, other emergencies. And so if those beds, if those beds are occupied for one reason or another, whether that's due to the COVID surge or to other, you know, or to other conditions, we want to be mindful of our capacity locally. And so one of the things we've been keeping track of, Melrose, Wakefield being one of our strongest support providers here in the local area, currently we're at 80% ICU bed capacity. And so we don't have a whole lot of surge capacity in terms of if there is another surge, or if there are, there is an event for us to respond, we are not completely out of the woods. And so even though we have encouraging data, that way I reviewed before, the positivity rate, decreasing number of new cases per day, we are still in a position where we need to be mindful of the way we scale back. And so a couple of things also about the masks themselves, I want to stress that a lot of folks have reached out to talk about the mask mandate, the impact it's had for families and for students, and by no means do I want to discount any of that. It's very real. We're all suffering from COVID fatigue. A lot of people are, you know, going, going through a lot of stress, whether that's directly COVID-related or not. And I think the masks are a very symbolic part of that. And the reason where we've been able to avoid a lot of in-school transmission, part of that is due to masks. We have plenty of evidence just that proper mask wearing, proper masks have been very effective in decreasing and preventing in-school spread. And so what's really important here is we want to stress that when we, when we go back, when we start, when we start approaching, you know, going to a return to normalcy, we want to stress that we don't do that all at once. We want to be gradual, we want to be deliberate in our, our attempts to do so. Right now, we're trying to balance some of the recommendations that are being passed down. And so DESE has given us the clearance to lift on the 28th. One of the things we're still balancing is the high community transmission rate. And so if we're looking at the Middlesex County transmission rate, we're at 171 cases, cases per 100,000. And just for reference, that is still considered high transmission on the CDC scale. And so, you know, one of the things to keep in mind is that schools do not operate in a vacuum. They are just as much part of our community as anybody else, and I think it's something to consider for us. And one thing I want to, I want to stress is that when we have, you know, all of these testing, you know, testing protocols, when we have social distancing, and when we have masking, all of these measures should be taken into account. And when we start scaling these back, we want to be deliberate about it. And so the one, the one thing I'll leave with here before I take any questions is that for anybody who's suffered any kind of, any kind of physical injury, one of the things I want to say is that you don't just start running immediately. If you suffer, you know, an injury to a leg or injury to the foot, when you start engaging in activity again, it is a slow ramp up back to that, and I would equate that to return to normalcy. I would say as a collective, as a community, as a nation, we have faced a lot of trauma in the last two years. And so what I want to suggest is that before we go back to having masks be optional, we want to allow for everybody to have a chance to have the testing program in place, test at home kits for longer than a week. We want to make sure that we have a built-in period, that we know that there's going to be a surge after February break. We want to provide that buffer time before we go back. Thank you.
Michael?
Go ahead.
Anthony, I have a couple of questions for you. This is Mike Podro, by the way. Thanks for coming. The 21st seems like an awful long ways away from the 28th. So I guess I, I haven't really heard you say anything. It gives me sort of definitive measures that say, this is why it should be the 21st versus the 14th versus the 7th. So, and, and I'm really struggling with that, and I suspect this entire body is going to be struggling with that unless we have some definitive data. I could understand perhaps because of the spring break and people travel, and, you know, you know, it's contagious for a certain period of time, I could, I could potentially see a week. I have a very hard time seeing two weeks or three weeks after the 28th. So I need, I need you to explain to me why that is the case.
Sure, that sounds good. Thank you for your question. So I think, I think it's a really good point. I think when we talk about, you know, specific dates, I think it's really difficult to really put on one, one date or another. I would say the reason we suggested the 21st, and this is of our consideration, I would say the reason we put 21st is that we know that we've seen a spike generally within the one and a half to two-week timeframe. That was what was reflected last year, when they, when everybody returned from February break and Super Bowl Sunday, you know, these major events that generally people do gather for. And so we saw one and a half to two weeks generally is when the spike happened and then started to decrease. And so the reason we had put that third week in there is because of the kind of buffer time that we're, that we're hopeful that the case will come back down. I don't, I don't necessarily see a massive difference between the 14th, I believe that's the Monday, 14th and 21st, correct me if I'm wrong. But I believe that the difference between the two to three weeks, I think it's important for us to consider that window anyways, but I would say that the real, you know, the real reason we're putting this, you know, time between after break anyways is to, is to provide that buffer for return from break, right? And so I would say the 14th and the 21st, I don't see a major difference, and that would be perfectly acceptable to consider.
So, next question is for you, Doug. So when the mask mandate goes away, what about the testing program that's currently in place changes at all? Does it not?
So the testing program, we, we have switched from test and stay to symptomatic testing and the at-home testing program. So we had our first testing day on the 4th, 14th, right, which was yesterday, and the second testing day will be on the 28th.
So the test, testing day on whatever two weeks is after that, that will be identical to the one that's done on the 28th, is that correct? In other words, we, we shut off the masks, or we, we allow people to choose whether they wear masks or not. How does that program change into March into April?
It doesn't.
Doesn't at all?
You know, we're still providing symptomatic testing in school, and we are providing antigen testing at home for students and faculty that have chose to participate.
Okay. So one more question for Anthony, then I'll shut up. So, maybe. So, so talk to me about the 7th and the 14th, Anthony. Tell me what's a compelling reason why we should delay it two weeks post the 28th?
Sure. So we know that the incubation period generally is anywhere from 10 to 15 days. So what we're, we're really expecting is that the 7th, we will still see generally if it's close to the peak or possibly just, just over the peak, and that's the reason why we have selected the 14th as a possible alternative date. We would reasonably expect that if gatherings have happened and spread have happened over break, that we would see the decrease happen by the 14th, barring any, barring any other reason. So we are expecting the, the peak to be over at least by the 14th. We had built in the 21st was kind of a extra buffer, but the 14th, we were expecting at least to see that that surge be over.
I thought the incubation was five to seven days. Explain to me the 10.
Three to five.
Three to five. Yeah, explain to me, that's what we, whether we're hearing it correctly or not, that's the number we've been hearing.
And that's the protocol that we've gone by with when our students have COVID.
The three to five days is the correct incubation period. What I, what I was saying, sorry, so let me clarify. So for the 10 to 15 days, we generally have been seeing surges after, after break take place in that timeframe, and so that's the reason we had built that in. The three to five incubation period is still correct for me.
Okay, thank you.
If you look at our December, sorry, our January data, that first week in January, we had 199 new cases that we, the ending of the first week. The next week, we had 293 new cases. The week after that, we had 198. And then it drops off to 111, 66, and now 33, right? So we saw three weeks of numbers kind of rising. It's in line with that. I don't love it. I don't, I don't love three weeks, but it is in line with what we saw coming out of December, if you look at our January numbers.
And I think to your, I think to your point, when you look at those numbers, I, I think it depends on the scale of the, on the scale of the gathering, and so it'd be difficult for us to quantify whether there's more gathering, you know, after, you know, the holidays before January versus now. I know that there's going to be some considerable travel happening during this time, and so it's difficult for us to compare completely between the two. But I would say you're right, when we're looking at previous breaks, we've always seen a surge happen for about three weeks afterwards. And so depending on the scale, we could see, we could see a similar trend.
Tom, and then Amy, you're up next.
Uh, thank you. Anthony, thank you very much for really all your attention and all your work in the last year, really since you've been here. This is not an easy conversation for you to lead or for you to provide us with this data, so I certainly appreciate, appreciate your professionalism and your, your attention. I, I have a couple of questions. I have been one, as I'm sure many, many people in the community are, who've been guided by science, guided by public health officials, and have in many ways really made decisions and taken votes based on that information, and using that as, as really sort of a pretty strong sounding board for, for how to make some, to make some important decisions that really are outside of our, our area of expertise. We could sit around this table and talk about our experiences as, as educational leaders and community leaders and budget leaders, but, you know, this year and a half, or this nearly two years now has certainly shaken us all and given us a whole new area of things to be, pretend to be, to be knowledgeable about. But that being said, I still want to rely on, on the guidance of science and the guidance of public health officials, so I appreciate your candor. But that being said, what concerns me is the, is, is the difference between the guidance that the State Department of Public Health, the State Department of Education, the Governor's Office, the Commissioner of Education, what the information provided to them to have them come out and make the decision around February 28th, why is that not solid information? Why is that not strong enough guidance that we are hearing from our local staff and our local folks that we need an additional two to three, two to three weeks? It would be far more easier conversation if, if the state came out and said, you know what, let's all look at March 28th or March 22nd, or, and then we'd be having a different conversation, but it would, the, the state made it very clear in the information, the input that they received from the scientists and the public health folks that they rely on, which are not, you know, insignificant, you know, people with credibility. So I'm trying to balance what we have, what we have taken for the last two years in making decisions, really a reliance on, on, you know, federal public health officials, state public health officials, and of course yourself and your predecessor. So I'm trying, I'm trying to understand why there is a difference. Did the state get it wrong?
Well, you're not going to get a soundbite, soundbite out of me. But I think one of, one of the important things that you're touching on here is we, you know, this pandemic has been far from black and white. I think a lot of the decisions that have been made have, most of them have been data-driven. And I would say the reason the state has put this forth and the reason that we're asking for a variance from this is because some of the messaging out there in terms of data is not, is not uniform. Most recent, very recently, the CDC Director, Dr. Wolenski, has come out and said that it's too soon to be reversing course and to be lifting all mask mandates in schools. At the end of, I believe in January, the American Academy of Pediatrics came out and said strongly, they strongly recommend the use of masks in schools. And so one of the things that we're trying to balance, and by no means, you know, by no means are we claiming that we know more than the CDC, than the state DPH. I think one of the important things we're considering is our, our community needs, right? And so we know that we have a break coming up, and based on the previous data, we've seen the surge. And so we want to make sure that when we lift it, we're not lifting it prior to a surge in cases, that we know it's coming, right? And so while the state's recommendation may be statewide, they made a, they made a pretty strong point of emphasis that they would defer to local boards, local officials, that be you or the school committee, to make this decision, and by no means is an easy decision. But I think by doing so, they're giving, they're giving the local boards of health and the school committees the chance to really evaluate where their community asset is at. And I think it's something to consider. And I would say the data that they're looking at is not wrong. By no means are we claiming that that's wrong. But I think that if we're looking at the data historically for a previous experience of the exact same timeframe, we are expecting a surge, and it wouldn't make sense for us to lift it right before this, this rate of surge.
Okay, thank you.
Amy?
Yep, so I just have a couple of things. One, you just mentioned community needs. I wish that you had had the opportunity to listen to the members of the community tonight. We heard a lot of needs tonight, and it was, a lot of it was very difficult to hear. So just, maybe you have a chance to re-watch this meeting so you can hear some of those people that spoke. With that being said, I have a motion I'd like to make, so I don't know if you want me to make it now, or?
I think, well, we still need to have Florence speak, since Florence is here to speak.
Oh, I didn't know that, okay. I didn't see her on that.
Yeah, so let's, if we can finish questions with Anthony.
Okay.
Anybody else have questions for Anthony? Go ahead, Kevin.
Just a question, Anthony. You had mentioned and provided some rationale for the 21st, and I feel similarly to my colleagues, the same kind of questions that they asked were those that I was going to ask. You referenced, though, at one point, you know, potentially considering the 14th as maybe kind of a compromise or an alternative. Can you talk, but did I hear you correctly that the 14th might be something that as an alternative you'd recommend as opposed to the 21st?
Sure, that sounds good. So part of, part of, I'm going to backtrack a little bit, I think. Part of our job in public health, and by extension the school committee as well, is to implement the, the best policies in terms of health, science-guided, but also what the, what the community can tolerate, right? I think it's important for us to keep that in consideration. The reason I had said the 14th was because we, we knew that, you know, we generally saw a surge about one to two weeks after a return from break. The 14th would not be completely clear of that, but we would most likely be on the downturn of that, considering if the scale is slightly smaller in terms of travel, gathering, et cetera, compared to the breaks that we saw around the new year. And so part of the reason we had suggested that possibly 14th could be a good date for that as well, the reason we had put 21st is that we're counting for, you know, to see the full three weeks of surge, right? For it to come back down on the other side completely, hopefully by the 21st. The 14th would give us, you know, still a buffer, still give us a runway, I think, for us to, you know, keep these cases, keep these cases in mind and being able to have students be safely returned to school before we make the masks optional. But I think to answer your question, the 14th is a little bit narrower window in terms of possibly being safe, but it's not out of, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be conceivable.
Thank you.
Can I make one comment? Just one, three comments.
Unfortunately, you can't. I'm, I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's all right. I just, I urge that, like, you just really listened to the people that spoke earlier. That wasn't my comment, but.
No, I mean, he, I hear you, but we're, we're the ones voting. He's not, right? So at the end of the day, he's making our recommendation, recommendation to us. He doesn't control the vote. We all heard the, the, but I hear you. It would have been nice.
Pristic.
Yeah, absolutely. Other questions? I know I have one. Go ahead, Stephen.
Hi, Anthony, Steve Ingles. I'm curious, because I've heard recently, I think you gave the, the town of Melrose the suggestion that they, they might lift their, their mask requirement in municipal buildings, right? And we're looking at the, the same thing in Wakefield, but we're holding off on, on doing the schools. Can you talk a little bit about what makes the schools different as opposed to just sort of the municipal buildings, the retail shops? Um, as opposed to just sort of the, the municipal buildings, the retail shops, you know?
Sure, absolutely. So I think that's a good question, um, why we're, why we're considering, uh, the mask mandate, uh, in the first place tomorrow. And so, um, I, I believe you referenced Melrose, um, but, uh, I want to first touch on the scheduling of these pieces of this. Um, Wakefield's Board of Health meeting is tomorrow. Um, the Board of Health will be considering the mask mandate for the town and municipal buildings, uh, tomorrow at the meeting. And so we have, uh, there had not been a decision made. Um, I will be presenting a recommendation to the Board, and the Board will be voting on that tomorrow. Uh, in regards to Melrose, um, so tonight I made the same recommendation to the Melrose schools. Um, I asked, I asked for a, uh, extension to the March 21st, part of my recommendation. I think to address your question, you were asking why, why we're considering the town, town-wide mandate versus the school mandate, why we would conceivably continue the school mandate after, uh, pass the town mandate, is that correct?
Sort of, it was, it's my understanding that Melrose lifted their municipal mask mandate, um, and their.
So, uh, just to clarify, the municipal mask mandate for Melrose is still in place.
Oh, I apologize.
The citywide business, um, citywide public spaces is lifted, but the municipal buildings mandate is still in place.
Okay. And then so why would we keep it in place in the schools? What makes us different than sort of the, the average retail, like the town?
Right, right, okay. So to answer that question, I think it's important for us to consider, first of all, the schools are always a bigger part, is part of our bigger community, right? And so the spread doesn't just happen in schools, it will leak into the community and there's always factors that contribute. The reason the schools are slightly different is because of, uh, because of density. I think it's because of how close students and teachers are during a day, periods of time that they're so close together. Uh, it makes for an environment of transmission, uh, if, you know, without masks, um, it is difficult to control. And I think, you know, even with the best efforts and I, you know, first I want to applaud all the school administrators and all the school staff for doing their best during this pandemic to space everybody out to create a, a safe learning environment. It's very difficult to space everybody out adequately for the entire day. And so I think, um, the density of school and all the transitions between classes, um, makes it very difficult to control transmission, and that's why we want to keep it in place for a little bit longer.
Anthony, can you share the, what happened in Melrose tonight? In the meeting where you made the recommendation, or do you not know?
So to be totally honest, I had to leave before the vote because I was, uh.
To come here? Okay.
But, uh, just, just to clarify, um, I can, I can see if there's any updates, but I believe, um, it looks like, uh, it looks like it's still under consideration.
Okay.
So there is no, there is no update yet.
Okay. Um, any other questions from, go ahead, Michael?
You talked about the surge. And you said that average surges, 10 to 15 days. Tell me about the difference of where we are now. I assume the surge you're comparing it to is the June, uh, the January break, is that correct? As a reference point?
Well, the January break, but also same time last year.
So, but a lot of variables impacted those surges. You know, we had Omicron, uh, we don't have that now. So would the expectation be because we don't have those factors that the surge might be a shortened period of time than what it has been previously? Is that a fair possibility?
Um, yes, so I just want to clarify, you said that we didn't have, I guess we didn't have Omicron, Omicron back then? Is that what you're referring to?
Well, yeah, just that what we don't have now is a new variant that's jumping through the roof that perhaps we had previously. So, so if it's a quieter period now, should we expect the surge to be less because of that?
Sure, so I guess to answer the question, we would expect the top, the peak of the surge to be lower, you know, theoretically than the previous surges, right? And so what you're referring to is it's not a completely new variant like Delta came on the scene at that time or Omicron at the same time, you know, came out this year, that kind of thing. So, you know, theoretically, we would expect the peak of the surge, um, to be lower, but we wouldn't, but we wouldn't necessarily expect the duration of the peak or the, the curve of the peak uh, to be much shorter. One of the things that we're, that we're currently struggling with, I think, and this is not unique to Wakefield. I would say this is a lot of communities. Uh, if we're looking at our school age population, uh, we know that the booster provides a lot of great protection, um, compared to just getting the two shots and, you know, it wanes after five months. Uh, our booster rates, uh, could do some work, I believe, from, for the eligible groups of 12 to 15, we're currently at 22% booster rate. Um, we're at 43% for 16 to 19-year-olds. Uh, and for the 5 to 11 group, it's only been eligible for two shots. Um, the number is at 62% right now. It hasn't very, it hasn't really moved much, um, upwards since our initial push to get this out there. And so, um, we're, we're still seeing some vaccination, um, rates lag behind slightly. And so that also feeds into this very complicated system of trying to figure out, you know, how long a surge could be, what the potential maximum number is.
But so one more question, I'm glad you brought up the vaccination. So clearly the vaccination rates now are a lot better than they were at any previous surge. So should the increased vaccination rate also either take the peak down or perhaps shorten the duration as well?
It could, it could absolutely influence that. But I would say, um, compared to the January, after, uh, return from January break, um, I don't believe the vaccination rate has changed very much since that peak. I mean, sorry, since that surge in January, I don't believe it's changed very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anthony, can you, um, can you share what your recommendation is going to be tomorrow night? And are, is the recommendation for Wakefield the same as what you did in Melrose, which is just small business and not municipal buildings? Or will it include municipal buildings?
So my recommendation tomorrow will be to lift the mask mandate for the town, uh, which will include, uh, the municipal, municipal building.
So there's a lot of people who have a hard time with.
As of when?
No, he's tomorrow, oh, yeah, as of when, Anthony?
Oh, sorry, the, the recommendation will be effective immediately.
Effective immediately, okay. Right, so there's a lot of people, and you already said it, but I think you, we may need to have you say it again. What makes those buildings different than the school buildings? And I know I heard you, right? It's density, it's kids spending six hours in a building, um, which is different than being in a store, stopping by to grab something, um, maybe not so much as sitting in a restaurant for a number of hours. That's, that's the one I think gets a lot of people. But can you just talk a little bit about that? Because I think people really have a tough time, um, with why those are different.
Sure, yeah, so I think, um, again, like you just said, I'll touch upon them again. I think the school environment is slightly different than the rest of town. I would say, um, the density, again, is, is very difficult to, it's really difficult to mitigate. I would say students, you know, can be kept apart as much as possible. But again, it's a very social environment. Um, it's, you know, in classes, it's, you're sitting in a classroom for a long period of time, whether or not the windows are open or not, right? It's still, it's still very close quarters. And I will say another thing, um, is that, you know, not to discount, you know, any of the concerns about keeping masks in place due to any of the, you know, other, other issues that are going on, but I would say we need to do our best to protect our teachers as well. Um, we have, you know, we have a very strong staff in Wakefield and they dedicate themselves every day and they're putting themselves on the front line, being exposed to students and themselves traveling, right? And so I think it's very important to keep in mind when they're spending this many hours in a classroom with so many students, um, when we know there's a surge coming, it's gonna, it's gonna cause them to be at advanced risk as well. And so I think, um, the school environment is slightly different for those reasons. And I think it's, those reasons are enough for us to consider, uh, extending it for a period of time.
Anybody have any remaining questions for Anthony?
I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Amy.
Anthony, thank you. I just, if hypothetically speaking, if there was no break next week, would you then be, be voting or recommending the 28th date? I'm just worried when we come April vacation, I mean, we have three breaks every year. And I don't want to start pitting the vacation people against the non-vacation people.
Oh, absolutely. I think, um, I think it's part of a bigger discussion. There's a question posed to me earlier that kind of falls in the same vein of, you know, once, you know, once this mask mandate is lifted, uh, whenever that is, um, is it indefinite? Is it, is it the last time we'll ever see it? And to be totally honest, um, no, nobody can make that prediction. Um, I can't say for certain whether or not we will ever need a mask mandate back in place again. Um, the hope is, no, the hope is that we don't need that. But, uh, to answer your question, um, whether or not I would have recommended we lift it on the 28th if there was no school break, um, I would still have been hesitant, uh, to, to, uh, to advocate for that. I may have short, I may, would have shortened the window, um, but that's also due to the factor that, um, I believe the at-home testing program and someone's probably, if I'm wrong, began this week. Uh, we, it began on Monday. Um, so one of the things that we also want to build in is kind of get into this routine, having, you know, having families and nurses and the schools get, get kind of acquainted with this system, right? And so we're doing this and then we're moving right into break. Uh, we want to make sure that we get back into the swing of things, make sure it's working before we consider lifting anything.
Thank you. Anthony, can you hold, can you stay on or do you need to, just as this conversation goes in case we have another question for you?
No, I, I can stay on.
Okay. We'll have Florence come up?
Florence Martin, I teach kindergarten at the Woodville School. Um, I want to thank you for including us as stakeholders to participate this evening in this decision. Um, not that we have a vote, but, um.
Florence, can you tell, say who you're, um, representing?
I'm representing the Teachers Association.
There we go, thank you.
Okay, sorry. I just view myself as a teacher here tonight first, listening to you. And I want to assure all the parents that we want to see your children's faces. We want to see their smiles. We want to teach without masks as much as you want us to teach without masks. And we want to welcome you back into our schools because we miss you. It's been hard and I, um, I marvel at the dedication of people going in and doing this every day. We miss our kitchens. I think, uh, Mr. Lyons was tired of hearing me ask last year, every time I saw him, can we have our tables back next year in kindergarten? Um, can we have our kitchens back? You know, our principal, uh, Mr. Carter, made sure we got some things back this year that the children could use because it is a big part of education to have some of those things. Um, so I don't want anyone thinking we, we don't want just what you want. And I think teachers have tried their hardest to make sure that we do the best we can. I know that we talk at lunch how we sometimes have to show the children how to make the letters so we'll sneak our masks down so they can see where the, our tongues go for the L. So, um, but what we do want is for this to be successful. We don't want to have a big surge after vacation. And I hear this year more than any year of people going away, going to Disney. They're, you know, going skiing. So I think that people are traveling more, if you listen to the reports of travel. Because of this decision, we, um, we asked teachers how they felt. And I think that, I think the break has a big part to do with it. I think they're thinking if we could just have that time so it could be successful, so we could see if, um, there was a surge. If there, if the numbers were great on the 14th, who's to say we couldn't say, um, you know, or the 7th, if there were no, no high numbers? I think we have to remember that there are still people dying and it's still hard to get a hospital bed and, and, or a surgery in this state. We had a family member that had to be airlifted here and, but we couldn't find him a bed. It was very hard to find him a bed. So I think those things are still going on. We have teachers who've lost family members, so that they're, they're concerned about a big surge. So I think that, um, we want this, but we would like to wait until after the vacation surge. Um, we want to be positive and we want to be, um, able to assure parents because there are parents here speaking about taking masks off. And I think there's going to be some anxiety, anxiety of taking masks off. Sometimes when my children come back from a specialist, they'll see me and they'll say, put your mask on. Ms. Martin, you don't have your mask on. And I think that there is that anxiety even with adults. I attended, um, a big event in Melrose at Memorial Hall, the brawl in the hall, actually. And, um, I remember sitting there thinking, oh, I haven't been anywhere like this for years. So I think that there'll be some anxiety in taking the masks off too. I think that, um, to do it slowly, you know, I, I, we see the kids' faces at lunch and at snack, but have they seen our faces as much as they should? Probably not. Will they be, um, will parents be comfortable? We're worried about, um, we have so many questions. We don't want children to feel, whose parents want them to wear masks still, to feel, um, any different than people who don't want their kids to wear masks. Uh, the questions we have, um, is this man removal for vaccinated kids only or is it for everyone? You know, we're all hoping for the, the numbers of vaccine to be so great that we'd have hard immunity. Um, they're not quite there yet. And then how are we, how are we going to notify, um, people who come in without a mask on the 28th? You know, do, we don't want any, we want it to be a positive thing. We don't want kids to come in and say, well, you're not supposed to be here because, or you need a mask. Will there be more social mitigations with, without masks in the school? People are talking about, um, coming into the building, well, you need a proof of vaccination. Where we're hearing that you need, five-year-olds will need a proof of vaccination to go into some places in Boston as of this week. So is that going to be part of it? Will people, when we have big events, big events like the showcase at the Galvin Middle School, 2,000 people sometimes go in and out in that day. Will, um, there be different mitigation service, you know, things for that? So people are anxious a little, um, but they, the majority of teachers would like to wait for the surge, to see if there is a surge. We're hoping there isn't, but to see if there is. And I think, um, coming here tonight made, made people feel good that we were being asked about how we felt and, um, and that's honestly how we feel. And we do, we do want this over as much as anyone who spoke tonight. As much as, as anyone, we want to see their little faces smiling. We're, we're thrilled, we got this, this furniture in our kindergartens and, um, it was very exciting, you know, like, ooh, play with a marble run with it, with your group of friends. We couldn't move their seats, um, until October when we came back. We had to have seating plans and we could sit them in little groups, but they had to, you know, we had to do contact tracing, so, so things are getting better. But I think we're this close. I'm hoping we're this close. And, um, thank you very much for having us. People really appreciated that, that you wanted to hear our input.
Thanks, Florence.
And like anything, there, you could meet some teachers in the street and they would say, we want the masks. We want the masks off. Everybody wants the masks off, but we want them off tomorrow. When then there are others who say, the masks are working, I'm wearing my mask. Are teachers going to be criticized if they still wear their masks because they're not comfortable? You know, will it be mandated that we have to take our masks off on the 23rd? So those, those are our questions. And again, we appreciate, um, your time and listening to us.
Thanks, Florence.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You can, in this situation, yes.
Florence, just a quick question. So if you had to pick a date, what date would, would the teachers feel would be?
That's putting me in a really tough position.
Yeah, because you've set a few, so.
Because I could go, I could, I could say, I would love to have a floating date if there was no surge.
Yeah, yeah. So you want to, just to give her, let her say, uh, you, you, you want to kind of wait and see before deciding on a date? Is that a fair way of characterizing? to kind of wait and see before deciding on a date? Is that a fair way of characterizing?
Oh, no, I, I would want to decide on the 21st as the final date. I wouldn't want to say, oh, I want to wait till the 14th and then say we can go till April 15.
Okay, so you want to wait till the 21st before we decide?
No, I, I would just push it back maybe till the 14th if there was no surge.
Right. She'd move it up.
Just want to make sure, I'm sorry, move it up. Okay, that's why I was confused.
And I also wouldn't think it would be bad if we did it on a Thursday. Uh, you know, like on the, it doesn't have to be the 21st.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Yep. Okay. Thanks.
Yep. Um, Amy, you, you wanted to make a motion, which I think we can do and then we can have some discussion as a group, right? And then we can kind of figure out from there. So I'll go ahead and yield to your motion.
Okay. I move that the school committee vote to rescind the current face covering policy effective 2/28/22 and task the policy subcommittee to write a new policy stating mask, masking is optional starting Monday, February 28th, 2022.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, discussion. Go ahead, Kevin.
Sure, yeah. Um, I would suggest, you know, one of the things that came out yesterday from the MASC was a face covering policy that addresses those sorts of things. So I would, I would suggest that whatever date we choose, that we also lay this on the table and just amend the policy currently. Um, and if you, if you allow, I'll actually just read it because you haven't had a chance to, to get it in your packet. So there's an introduction. The Wakefield Public Schools are committed to providing a safe environment in schools during the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. Maintaining a self-in, safe environment is critical to the district's ability to ensure students remain in a full-time classroom learning environment. According to public health experts, one of the best ways to stop the spread of coronavirus and to keep members of our school community safe is the use of face masks or face coverings. Therefore, in accordance with guidance and recommendations from the Centers for Disease Control, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, the following requirements are in place until further notice. This would be effective with whatever date we choose. A face covering that covers the nose and mouth is strongly recommended, just recommended, to be worn by individuals who remain unvaccinated or otherwise immunocompromised in school buildings and on school grounds, even when social distancing is observed. Individuals who are vaccinated are not required to wear a mask, but may do so if desired. That also addresses staff, faculty, visitors, you know, anyone coming into the schools, that if they want to choose to wear a mask, they're certainly encouraged. And some of our speakers encourage that as well. But I think an important part that I don't want not to be in there, that I think is really critical, is students and staff returning from five-day quarantine following a positive COVID test must follow strict mask use other than when eating, drinking, or outside, and conduct active monitoring for symptoms through day 10 of exposure. So for those that are returning to the schools following a positive, it kind of builds in that expectation that they will be masked, which to me makes sense. And, you know, maybe we can have Anthony comment on. Masks will be required in all health, school health offices, which is pretty standard from the medical field. And by federal public health order, all students and staff are required to wear a mask on school buses, which hasn't changed as well. So I would recommend maybe that be laid on the table today so that in two weeks we can vote on that. Personally, um, just to, just to address the, the motion on the floor, I certainly take, um, into account what we've been told, uh, by Anthony, just kind of my own understanding, the desire of the teachers, but also the really strong messages that we heard today from families and our student who spoke so eloquently and sent us an equally eloquent letter. What's not represented today, though, many of us know, are the letters that also talked about some of the other things, that concerns that are arisen in their families and those sorts of things. So trying to balance those two. I asked earlier of Anthony about his suggestion that maybe a compromise could be the 14 days. That's what I would personally favor, so I won't vote for that motion. But, um, certainly whatever the majority decides, I say we lay this on the table at that time.
Can I ask a question? A clarifying question? I, I, you read a lot there, so I just want to make sure. I thought you said that if people have not been vaccinated, they will continue to be required?
Nope.
I missed it.
Strongly recommend, but not, not required.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
To go on that part, though, I think that part should be taken out of it altogether. Um, as we know, people that are vaccinated, boosted, the whole thing, you can still get COVID. So to me, that, it doesn't matter. And it's really nobody's business who's vaccinated versus who's not vaccinated. And we're talking about, you know, we don't want kids to get picked on because they have a mask versus they don't have a mask. Um, and that's just kind of, that's just adding fuel to the fire. Oh, so-and-so has a mask on and that's because he's not vaccinated or whatever. I just, I think that that's, that type of stuff, the verbiage should come out. That's just my opinion on that.
Go ahead, Stephen.
Can I ask Anthony a question?
You may.
Anthony, um, to, to Amy's point about, um, mask coverings and vaccinated versus unvaccinated and the spread of the virus, would you consider it effective health policy to recommend that those who are unvaccinated, um, consider strongly wearing a mask?
So, so to address that question, I think, um, it's important to take into account that, you know, unvaccinated students are at higher risk, uh, unvaccinated individuals are at higher risk of serious consequences and, and tracking COVID, right? To answer your question, I would suggest that unvaccinated students do consider wearing a mask. Um, but, but I do hear all points and I think it's important to consider the social and emotional health of all students. And I think when we get to the point where we're talking about having unvaccinated students wear a mask, vaccinated students don't have to wear a mask, I think that will create an issue, uh, for all, right? It'll create stigma around vaccination, which we do not need anymore of. Um, I think it's important to consider that the, the recommendation that we have put in place for, you know, this time period is to really avoid getting as many cases as we can. And then also at that point, no longer need to worry about, you know, forcing one group or another to be masked. We really should just make that, you know, a universal precaution and recommend everybody wear. So we should not be, we should not be in the business of identifying unvaccinated individuals, having them wear a mask, right? That would, that would never work for a number of reasons and, you know, the social, emotional health of students being one of them.
Thank you.
Um, I have a question for Anthony.
Go ahead.
Is the, read the part again about the, when someone's coming back with COVID.
Yeah.
If someone has COVID, did, and they come back to school, are they required by some statute that they have to wear a mask for five days? Is that, is that like a state?
So, the recommendations through the DPH and DESE has been that if you are returning from isolation, that you do continue strict mask wearing through day 10. Um, so if you are returning from isolation, uh, you should be wearing that until day 11. And then, um, whatever, whatever ends up being decided here can apply. But day 11, day 10 is kind of that number that we're hoping for.
When you, but, but is it a mandate or is it a recommendation?
I believe, I believe it is a mandate through DESE. Um, I'd have to be, I have to check on that. But I believe DESE mandates mask, strict mask wearing, uh, when possible. Uh, I think there's an exception made for, um, special circumstances, so special educating students or anybody who can't medically wear a mask.
Okay.
If the, if the medical exemption, but I believe it's a mandate.
All right, we might want to...
I think, Amy, I'm pretty sure that I read that in the, um...
I, I just, it's new, so I haven't looked into it. I'm just curious if he knew.
Um, so I wanted to raise for the committee just an interesting conversation I had with, um, a parent this afternoon who I think maybe represents some of the, the thinking in, in this room of wondering if we are going to really stick to a date, a future date. And if the school committee is going to, we get to the, you know, let's say we say the 14th and we have our meeting on the 8th and we come in on the 8th and we say, ah, the numbers, they look a little high, we're a little worried, like, let's extend this again. And I was, I was, I personally was surprised because honestly, that had never even crossed my mind. And it was really important, I thought, for me to hear it. I think it's important for us to hear it as a committee because while we can't make any promises, I think, I, I think we all have to, I don't know how we even say it, but I, I don't think it's our intention to move past this. The state has said the 28th, the governor has said that. I think we all feel, some of us feel like the timing of that feels odd, coming off of vacation. If we put a buffer in place and we voted on a buffer, are we going to stick to a buffer? And I know personally, I can say, I'm going to stick to a buffer. I, I don't want to see this go on any longer either. Um, but I think there's a real feeling in, with people in the community that we are not going to stick to that and that they're afraid that we're just going to keep moving it.
Right.
And I think we just need to be aware that that's out there because I was not aware that that feeling was out there. Um...
I think Desi may drive that perhaps, too, in the future.
Certainly. We can't, right, we can't make any promises, we can't make any promises. If Desi says we got to wear masks, we got to wear masks. Um, and if, if things change and the Department of Health comes in and says, like, hey, we really need to rethink this. But I think in the current state that we're in and the numbers coming down and what we know today and the way things stand today, the feeling is get over, get to the 28th, get over the hump, have a little buffer and take those damn masks off for kids. Because I was the person that Greg Spry quoted earlier. I recognize that there are, are things that are not great about masks for young kids, for middle, you know, for readers, for preschoolers not being able to, to read social cues. I get it. We need to get masks off. But I think we got to do it smart and I think we've got to do it and give us a little bit of a buffer.
Suzy, you made a, a good point, though. You said, if Desi says we have to put them back on, then we have to listen to Desi. Desi is telling us to take the masks off. Why do we not have to listen to them now?
Because Desi has not, it's totally fair point. And I, and I, I totally get that. But Desi has made some unusual and, um, not great decisions all along the way here.
But we've listened the whole time to them.
We, we have, yes. Yeah, because we have to. But that's not because we haven't said, like, God, that was dumb. Like, why did they do the timing of that now? It's more about timing. I feel like they're very, um, they're not, they're, I can't think of the example. There was something months ago that happened that it just seemed like, what are you got, why are you doing this now? Like, that just doesn't seem like smart timing. But I hear you. I think that's a fair point.
Yeah, at some point we have to...
Might I chime in real quick?
Yeah, sure.
Not to, not that I have any more insight than you do, um, in terms of some of the decisions that Desi has made. And I think to your point, you know, for the most part, we have followed along with Desi, I believe, since, since last year and into this year as well. Um, okay, it's a couple of things, um, I want to remind everybody is that when, when we did do that shift, uh, when it was recommended that we shift to the five days, the five days of return from isolation, uh, the five days of return from, you know, five days of return from isolation, it's something to consider because we know now that a lot of individuals are still somewhat contagious after day five, right? And so, um, the shortening from day 10 to day five is not necessarily, it's not necessarily a, a public health-driven decision. Some of this has to do with, you know, some of the workforce issues that we had. And I think some of the, you know, some of the, uh, the pressure that we're receiving right now is why are we different? And I think the governor, uh, you know, in, in some of his announcements, um, has stated that they're going to lift it on the 28th, but also has then put it on the local communities as well. And I think it's a responsibility of our local community. And what you guys are doing right now is delivering this very importantly, right? Um, you're looking at the data on the local level. You're looking at the policies that we have in place. And so, uh, because it was put before the local, uh, the local boards and local school committees, I think, um, speaks volumes. I think we don't necessarily need to follow Desi to a T. I think it's something for us to decide on the local level.
What I was starting to say, sorry, before...
Go ahead, Amy.
Oh, I was just going to say, at some point, it's time to rip the Band-Aid off. And it's, you know, it was two weeks and then it was two months and then it, now it's two years. And it's just, at some point, these kids have to be kids. And the mental toll that this is taking on kids, my kids included, is, it's not good. And we, we can't continue to live like this. This is going to be around for the rest of our lives, just like the flu, just like everything else. We're going to have to learn to live with it. So if Desi is saying the 28th, why don't we just jump at it and take the 28th and, and move forward? If people are sick, they stay home. If you want to wear a mask, you wear a mask. If you don't, you don't.
I, I don't think anyone is discounting the, the real trauma that's happened to, like, every student in our district. But I think there is a, that the historical data is there. Like, there's, we have a, you know, Board of Health here saying that, like, this is their suggestion. And you say that Desi says that we can take masks off, but that's, that's not what they said. They said they lifted their mandate and they put it up to local boards. So they didn't say, just, we're done with this and, and that's what we're listening to. We're just taking that mantle on. And to have the discussion that we're having right now.
Right.
Um, with community input, which is, which is very important. But again, to what Kevin had said earlier, for the very vocal and, and emotional stories here tonight, we've seen them in emails. We've seen the other side of this in emails. And the reality is that where we are a community, it's not, it's not one singular decision. It's, it's all of our decisions. Like, it's, it's everyone. We're in charge of every student in the district. Not individual students, not individual families, everyone. So I'm not, when I'm thinking about this, I'm not just thinking about my family. I'm not, of course I am, but I'm thinking about everybody's family. And how can we get out of this the safest, in the best shape? What I'm driven back to is how the, the worst was when the kids were trying to learn remotely. Like, back, God forbid, we're not careful with this and we have to go back remotely. That's where the real damage is going to come back. That's where there was zero learning happening. So we're in a good space now. We absolutely are. We're trending down. We're going, we're, we're coming out of this. But let's just pay attention to what's happened before. Let's be ready for it, be cautious, and hopefully come in, you know, the, I would say honestly, I'm, I want to say the 21st just because that's what I heard Anthony say. And I trust his perspective as a health professional. So I've heard others, you know, the 14th, or we want to play with moving the date. I want to go with where the person who's in charge of the well-being of our community tells me he feels the safest. And that's kind of, that's where I am. Um, not discounting the emotional and educational toll that it's taken on the students, absolutely. But let's, let's do it safely. Let's absolutely get there. And to, to Suzy's point, I don't, I don't want to move the goalposts, but I don't want, again, Mike in the past has said, let's pick a date and stick with it. I don't want to do that. I, I want to hope for a date. Let, let's hope for that. But let's get back. Let's look at the numbers. And if, I think, what Florence had said, you know, if it looks good on the 14th, then sure, let's roll it back a little bit. But let's give the data a chance to develop and see where it goes.
Right. And I, I think that with the, making masking optional is the best way to have it for everybody. Like I said, if you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. If you don't, then you don't. That's, that's the way to, we're cutting out that whole portion of people that are struggling wearing the masks because of the effects it's having on them. We're forcing them to do something that they don't feel is right. So we're not, in my opinion, we're not looking out for the community as a whole. We're only looking out for that group of people that, that they feel safer if everybody around them has a mask on. We're not looking at the other people when we're doing that. When we make it a family choice, we're saying, we entrust in you that you're going to do what's best for your family and these are the, this is the route that you're going to take. Everybody's going to do what's best for their family. They're not going to put their kids in danger. If they feel that they're safe and that's the risk that they're willing to take, whether their family is vaccinated or not, that's the risk that their family is willing to take. We've, we've made these kids do what, you know, they've done everything. They've worn the masks, they've gotten shots, some of them have gotten boosters. They've stayed six feet apart. It's just, how much more can we force everybody to do to just step in line and just do as you're told, do as you're told, do as you're told? At some point, we have to say, you know, live your life.
Go ahead, Mike.
So, um, I, I philosophically am okay with some level of a buffer. Um, and in talking to Anthony earlier, I got a sense that, yeah, the 14th, okay. Doesn't have to be the 21st. Yeah, you're right. Yeah, you're right. So I, I sort of saw a little bit of a crack in the armor in the logic of the 21st during that dialogue back and forth. But then, of course, as I push more, I almost saw a little crack in the armor between the 14th and seven days, too, as well. So for me, um, I'm okay with a buffer. I, I just think that buffer doesn't need to be that long, quite honestly.
Go ahead, Tom.
Uh, thank you. Um, I think one of the things that is representative here tonight in this conversation, uh, as well as the last two years, is that COVID fatigue is real, right? I mean, we're all, we're all exasperated with it. This isn't the work that any of us, uh, never mind us volunteers, certainly administrators and teachers and, and parents, no one has really signed up for this. So the, the reality of this really, really sets in and, uh, makes these, uh, you know, decisions very, uh, meaningful and very thoughtful. Um, it's hard to disagree frankly with anything that's been said here tonight. Uh, you know, I want to, as I'm sure everyone does, want to thank the, the many parents and the students, as Kevin said, that, that spoke tonight very, very, from the heart, from the soul. We've received literally dozens, if not dozens and dozens of, of emails on both sides. Um, so where, where I'm going with, with this, one of the things that, that continues to be true... So where, where I'm going with, with this, one of the things that, that continues to be true from March of 2020 through now, one of the things that continues to be true is that, you know, there's no playbook here. There was no playbook on how COVID, how, how we're gonna deal with it when it started. We, we did, everyone came together, did their very best, listened to the best science and public health officials, came together on decisions. Many people didn't like the decisions and some people did. The end of the day, one of the things that I think is a huge compliment to our community, to our town, to our schools, to our staff, to our parents and kids, is, is this element of compliance. I mean, we are, we're in a good place with statistics and, and downward trends because of, of lots of compliance, whether it's mask wearing or vaccination and boosters. Again, people have to make personal decisions. They have to make choice for themselves and their families and their kids. One of the things that concerns me, even listening to this conversation in lots of sides, is, is a relative arbitrariness to what a buffer means. It, it's, you know, we, we wanna grow, we wanna be able to land, wanna be able to ground ourselves on square footing. To say the science tells us this, the math tells us this, the, the data tells us that. We're not really, we're not really in that place. We, we need to take best advice. And I do thank Anthony again for, for providing that from a public health perspective, his, his and others. The concern that I have is, is the balance. That there, that there are, that there are many concerns. It is, it is certainly time for us to, to renew trust and faith in families and in parents to be able to make decisions on behalf of themselves, on behalf of their kids. It is also time to, to look at what is going on nationally and statewide when they give us guidance around February 28th. The question that I asked Anthony, and again, I thank him for the answer they gave, but I'm still perplexed at that. So, you know, so anyway, so the, the concern that I have and wanna, wanna land on a, on a, on my two cents or my, my thoughts is that there's an arbitrariness to the buffer. I can appreciate a buffer. I can appreciate coming back from travel plans and all, and all of that February vacation week. I would like to support perhaps as a second motion, Kevin's suggestion that we place on the table tonight, the MASC recommendation for amending the, the mask policy. I think that almost can stand on its own two feet regardless of what date we pick. I think that's a great suggestion. We all got that in the, in the email a couple of days ago. What I'd like to, what I'd like to stress that I would be prepared to support would be that we give ourselves a, a week buffer until Tuesday, March 8th, at which time is our next school committee meeting. And we see after a week where we're at. I'm not interested in moving the target all over the place, but I'm also not interested in locking ourselves into a decision that is so finite that, that it's immovable. If we're, if we're, if we're going to be buffer oriented, I, I don't, I don't want it to be some, some buffer that has, that has another, you know, lifetime approach to it. Three weeks, right? Three weeks in the course of a, of a child's school year is a long time. It isn't a long time in, in the rest of our lives. We're all really old. So three weeks is like, is like a minute. So anyway, I, I'm suggesting that we land somewhere that, that we can compromise within, within ourselves and still be attentive to, to a buffer period and provide at least enough data within a week's period of time. That would be seven days, a period of time, to be able to collect and appreciate what's going on in our buildings. Not to kick the can down the road, but to be able to, to get some, get some more information under our belts.
Can I ask you a question, Tom, just for clarification? So you said Tuesday, the 8th versus Monday, the 7th? I'm curious why you said that.
Well, Tuesday, the 8th is our school committee meeting.
But the decision would be made tonight anyway.
Until the 8th.
Yeah, so why would it matter if we meet that night?
Probably wouldn't. I mean, I'm just thinking that, you know, if we're, if we're driving things relatively around calendars, which, which actually bothers me.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, it bothers me around because there's no, we're putting pins on a, on a calendar, which it doesn't belong. You know, then we're, so I'm perfectly comfortable with, with something less than, than that. I'm just drawing that because that's our next, you know, school committee meeting. And it gives us five plus two, meaning five days of the week of the 28th and then two days, Monday and Tuesday, to have, develop some data and get an appreciation of what's going on in the buildings.
Can I ask you one more question?
Sure.
So clearly, we're trying to put a stake in the sand right now or tonight. So we wanna pick a date. We know if the world explodes, all bets are off. I mean, who's kidding who in that regard? To think differently, you're out of your mind, I think, in my opinion. So, so if we pick a date, regardless of whether it's a date we beat or don't, we would still be able to reevaluate it on the 8th. So that's why I'm saying, could we do it on the 7th? Would the, starting with the new non-mask mandate on Monday, March 7th?
But then you have kids coming into school on the 7th and the 8th with no masks for us to then reevaluate it on the 8th.
Yeah, but I think we're gonna reevaluate it all the time anyway. So that, once again, are we putting a stake in the sand today?
I think we are.
Or we're not? If we're, if.
I think we have to put a stake in.
We have to. Are we gonna vote on the motion or does someone wanna amend the date?
No, we're, no, we're gonna, we're gonna vote on that motion.
Okay. Because when we talked about this on August 24th, it was to get the face covering policy, someone had to rescind the policy. So if we wanna change the process, then we should probably talk about that too.
Say that again, Amy? I'm sorry.
When we talked, when we voted to, to amend the face covering policy, it specifically says the face covering policy will be in place until it's rescinded. So we had this long conversation about process and about how we would come out of the face covering policy. And it was to rescind the policy. So there's a motion on the table to rescind it. I think we should vote on it. If it's not approved, then we should talk about how we're gonna come out of the face covering policy and when.
So we can, I mean, we can do that.
And then we can make another motion to put the amended one on the table. But we gotta move along.
No, I agree. I would like to, to jump on Tom's bus though. Because I had that very, the same exact thought that you had, but it was slightly different. Put a stake in the ground on the 14th. We'll reevaluate on the 8th. And if on the 8th, the surge has not happened the way we expected, we take it off on the 8th. Because you're putting a stake in the ground that's in the future. But we could reevaluate it if the numbers don't do what we, that, what we think might happen. Because we have a meeting already happening. And so we would say no masks starting on the 15th. But on the 8th, we could say, you know what? The numbers didn't do what we thought we were gonna do. Let's just make this effective immediately.
How would that be different if we put the stake in the sand on the 7th? We could still do the same, have the same discussion on the 8th.
Because the kids, because I think it will be confusing for kids if we say, don't wear masks on Monday, don't wear masks on Tuesday, and we come back in the room on the 8th and reevaluate it. If there's a chance, and, and we've just said, we're not gonna change it. At least I don't wanna, you know, I, I, that's, I don't wanna put myself in that situation. Where on the 7th, the, the surge has happened. We've said no masks on the 7th and now we're all concerned about the numbers.
There's always gonna be a surge, I feel like. It's the whole, the past two years, it's been like this. There's always gonna be a surge, you know, people go away, people do things.
But the surge has come down over time, the more, the more people that get vaccinated. So as the younger kids get vaccinated, when the zero to five vaccination becomes available, we'll see those numbers continue to go down.
Right, but that's not gonna happen for a while.
No, agreed. Okay, go, go ahead, Tom. And then I think we should vote based on Amy's.
Sure, no.
Recommendation.
And Amy, Lehman makes a terrific point about process. I mean, process obviously is at the, the fundamental of, of how we do things. But I think that we need to vet the conversation and, and land, and land there. So, you know, Mike, you raised a, a great question and one that is probably more important than, than not. Again, in the general arbitrariness of picking a date and throwing a date on the calendar. You know, whether it's, you know, what is Monday? And what is a Monday? What, in fact, I've, I've gotten a handful of, of outreach from parents and even, even my wife, a parent, who said, so what happens on the 28th? Do I, do I wear the mask and then it's at the end of the day? Is the 28th beginning at midnight? Is it, is the 28th, do we wear masks on the 28th? So it's really the first? I mean, I think there's still, you know, and so that's the relatively, that's the relative, you know, arbitrariness of, of some of this and the, the lack of clarity. So if, if, so I would, I guess I would even restate my own thinking around dates. When with the opportunity for us to revisit this, we should, we've been discussing this every two weeks for almost two years. So the fact that we're not gonna talk about it, be, of course, we're gonna target, but we always have, we always will. So maybe the thing to, if, in my, in my thinking, if, if we're gonna allow for a, a, a minimal period of, of buffer or I'm, you know, suggesting that we do, with the appreciation that there be a discussion on the 8th, the presentation of facts and a, and the opportunity to revisit if anything, I would say that we extend the mask mandate through Friday, March 4th. And then students get to come back to school on Monday, March the 7th. Without masks. And then we, we evaluate what that week looked like.
I would love to see bare minimum after a Monday so we can get tests back.
That's true. That's probably what I had in the first place when I, when I said the 8th.
And then at least if you're talking like somewhere into the future, past the second week, at least we get two weeks worth of data. It's not an arbit, it's not an arbitrary point. Yeah, it's not, it's not an arbitrary point. It's a chance to collect more data. And I, God, let's be optimistic. Let's, if it doesn't happen, absolutely, let's, let's ratchet it back and, and say, you know what? After two weeks worth of data, we feel good, the numbers are looking good, this is better than we could have expected. Holy smokes, let's go. Cause everyone wants to be there. But safety means let's get the data. Let's just get it. Let's find out. Let's be optimistic about it. Fingers crossed. Absolutely. Let's, let's take the, but I'm, I'm not for rolling it back and getting less data.
No, I get that. The, the problem with the data is it's such a moving target.
I just wanna clarify, I apologize. No, so you're saying the 8th rather than the 7th? Just to make sure I'm perfectly clear?
I'm saying the 21st. But, but, but in the space that we're talking about this, I'm not saying the 4th. Bare minimum, I'd like to see two weeks worth of data.
Tests.
Two tests.
So that would put it to what date?
Well, you take a test on the 28th and you take a test on the 7th.
When, when do we get reliable results from the take-home tests? When would you say that you? How long?
The next day.
No, 15 minutes.
The rapid test, 15.
No, but you collate it. You get the numbers back. When does the office say this is a good tabulation of what happened for tests?
We're relying on parents to tell us if we have a positive test.
Oh, and that's been, okay.
So that would likely be by the end of the day on Monday?
On the end of the day on Monday.
Yep.
So if we can, if we can rely on tests taken February, Monday, February 28th and Monday, March 7th, and then we go back to, or at least in my two cents, go back to the 8th.
And I know you don't agree, but just make sure I understand. So the 8th is a better date because we'll have at least two weeks worth of test data.
Correct.
Is that?
And then to, who was the one that had said, are we talking that we're taking it off on that day? Are we waiting till the next day? To that point.
Mrs. Markham.
To, to that point, if we're talking, if 8 is a school committee meeting, tentatively put it at the 9th. And we talk about the data that was gathered on the 28th and on the 7th, we make a determination on the 8th and then if we wanna move forward, there we go, Wednesday.
Wednesday, the 9th?
Not, not my choice, but if that's, if that's the space we're talking in.
Well.
I want the data.
The relative, yes. The relative concern that I have is the, is that, you know, there is no science around the buffer. But I appreciate the collection of data and to build space for that purpose, for the safety of all. And it, it's really an additional week beyond the state's request or the state's offering. While at the same time respecting the wishes and the, the realities of, of what we all know to be true in, 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 in our times and in our schools. I mean, we're in a, we're in a good place because people are working hard at this.
So I'm gonna.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So let's, let's take a vote on the motion that stands and see where we're at.
Amy's motion.
Amy's motion.
Okay, okay, yep, okay.
Do you want me to read it again?
No, I think we all know what it is.
Okay.
2/28, it's all a matter of.
We don't need a roll call. So all in fa, well, actually, go ahead and read it again. You know what, you should, just so everyone is clear of what we're all in favor of.
I move that the school committee vote to rescind the current face coverings policy effective 2/28/22 and task the policy subcommittee to write a new policy stating masking is optional starting Monday, February 28/22.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay, so that's a two to five. So it did not pass. Sorry?
No, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I would like to, if possible, to plagiarize most of Ms. Wall's verbiage. And, and I, I haven't memorized it, but certainly everything that her motion made. But replace it with Wednesday, March 9th as the date.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, discussion.
Yeah, I have a question. So, all right, so I know that my, my, my date of the 28th is no. But now, if I don't want the 9th, but I, like, if we're gonna go to the 7th, so we have those two weeks of data, am I gonna vote no here or am I supposed to just?
If you don't want the 9th, you vote no.
Okay, and I could make another motion?
If it, if the 9th fails, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I know, I'm gonna say the 2nd, the 3rd, the 4th. We wanna get away from that.
Right.
I have discussions.
Yeah, go ahead, Amy.
I just wanna remind everyone that we are not voting to take masks off.
No.
We are voting to give the parents a choice.
Right, yes.
Cause we keep saying when, when this date happens, all these masks like come flying off. And I don't think that's gonna be the reality. I think.
It's not.
Parents that might be saying, might send their kids to school. We don't know what it's gonna look like.
Right. People might try it out, leave the mask on for a little bit and then, okay, we feel good, now let's take it off.
Right. We're just giving the choice back to the parents.
Right.
Okay.
Doug, would you like to say something?
And if, if I may, I apologize. To Amy, to, to, to back up Amy's point, I think that's, that's the critical nature of where we are. And that's the point in time and where, and where we are. That we have, we have responsibilities to collect and, and make decisions. But at the same time, people have been through this for nearly two years now and I think are prepared to make decisions in a responsible and knowledgeable way. I mean, two years ago, as I said earlier, we were all flying without a net. We didn't, there's no playbook for how to handle COVID and how to handle masks. I mean, you know, for the last couple of years, I think we've done, you know, really good work, doing our best energy and putting lots of time and research and making thoughtful decisions. But, and this has to be one of those with a whole new set of data and a whole new set of parameters that include some expectations from what parents want for their own kids.
Doug?
I just wanna be clear with the committee that, you know, what, whatever's decided, that our nurses are still going to be managing and responding to COVID scenarios for students that are close contacts and for students that are positive, right? And that will include isolation and that will include advising on isolation when they come out. In regard to the, the question that, that came up earlier, which is from Amy about the, when students return on day six, if they are not symptomatic, they can return. But the, the guidance strongly recommends a mask from, for day six through 10, right? And so, and the reason that is, is because the students can still be shedding the virus during that time, right? And so, and the antigen test that we provide is really the best way to tell that. So I think we're in a good place. I just think we, I don't, I don't want this to get lost in the conversation because this is, yes, masking is a part of this. But whether students have them on or it's a choice or, and they don't, we, we're still going to need to be managing close contacts, positive cases, symptomatic students, et cetera. Just so that's, that's clear, right?
Any more? Oh, Kevin.
Yeah, I just wanna speak really quickly in, in support of Mr. Markham's motion. You know, again, I had suggested the 14th, but, you know, I think certainly what we do know, looking back at history, knowing what happens after vacations, acknowledging the fact that a lot of people will be traveling, I think that buffer is really important. And none of us know exactly what that is. Three to five had been suggested. And none of us know exactly what that is. 3 to 5 had been suggested. Anthony suggested a little bit more, but this is at least a little bit, and it's acknowledging what we all know, that there will be an increase. So it's taking, it's, it's addressing that matter as well. It seems a little bit more responsible to me and, you know, I'm happy to support that.
I'm sorry, I have another question. So we're voting on the 8th. Was that the date?
Yes.
No, we're voting the 9th.
It's a Wednesday.
Wednesday, the 9th.
Because we're going to come and talk about it the 8th again?
Well, we have a report, which we may, which we may or may not change it.
Oh, okay.
But one of the things that even to the superintendent's point, when he talked about 10 days, let's also consider that the, my two cents was that 10 days includes weekends, just because often we don't include, we talk about school days and that. There's still, there's still a 10-day period in that, in that period from coming back from break until when this, when this decision, if, if, you know, obviously, if it goes this way, but that's within the 10-day, it's after a 10-day window, in actual days.
Right, but we're basing this decision on, on people going on vacation. Well, there's a whole bunch of, of students not going on vacation. So, so they have to continue to mask and, and believe me, take the vacation. We all need it. But now we're like, we went from separating vaccinated and unvaccinated. Now we're like the vacations and the non-vacation people. I just, we, we keep dividing and dividing and I just can't anymore.
Can't take it.
It's certainly not my intention to divide anymore. My, my intention is, is, is to buy us time to have at least two tests under our belt. There will be people that will, that won't go away on vacation, that will just have home gatherings and, and such.
We will have two tests under our belt.
I'm thinking we could land, out of the relative, you know, out of, out of, out of the relative arbitrariness of some of this, if we can, if we can find a peg that, that, that gives us some ability to gather data to get back to science and public health officials and that. And the 9th gives us two weeks of data, testing on the 28th of February and testing on the 7th.
Just really quick, you know, I just, you know, I don't think that this is a matter of pitting vacationers versus non-vacationers. And I think if there's anything we've learned, we can look back at history, again, as Mr. Markham said, we're kind of making them miss up as we go. We're only, you know, we're in year two. And what we know is large events, holidays, traveling, results in an increase in cases. I don't care if you're in Florida, if you have Paw Patrol at Burlington Mall. Like, you know, spending time doing some of those things, particularly in areas that are unmasked, spending times in groups increases the number of positive cases. What we're doing is we're not pitting groups versus each other, but we, in our role as school committee members, are to create a public policy for our district. It's not pitting any group against each other. It's not a value statement about people who choose vacations versus those that don't. But what we know, we know nut rates increase. If, if you're indifferent to that, that's a valid perspective to have. It's not something I feel. I feel like we know as a policymaking body that in order to keep the most number of people safe, travelers, non-travelers, maskers, non-maskers, doesn't matter. But what we know is that any period of time, like a vacation, results in increased numbers. In our role as a school committee, the policy that makes the most sense to me is to create a time between when people are arriving back from these gatherings, regardless of where they are, to when we can more safely allow the decisions that you suggested, for parents to be able to decide for themselves and for their families whether to mask or unmask. But I just want to make sure, it's not pitting any group of people, nor making any valid judgments about decisions people make about their leisure time.
But we'll be in the same space after April vacation.
Yeah.
We may be, yeah, we don't know.
In the summer. Go ahead, Amy.
So when I, my daughter had COVID. She got to come back to school after five days. So if these kids are coming back from vacation, from not vacation, from whatever, on the 28th, they're testing, nobody else feels it's maybe an okay idea for, to wait five days? They're going to test again on Monday, the 7th. Hopefully, they're still negative. If they're not, then they stay home. But if we already know, when we know kids have COVID, they only have to be out of school for five days. So that's a five-day period. So they're going to test on the 28th. If they're negative, they're back in school. If they're positive, they're home. They're going to test again on the 7th, that morning before they come to school. Why not make it then the 7th? They know in 15 minutes if they're positive or not.
Can I jump on that?
Yeah.
Why can't we test on the 4th, too?
Yeah.
Because we're only giving out weekly at-home tests. We don't have enough tests.
So when are you giving them out?
The, they're giving out on the Friday with the anticipation to test on the Monday.
So they get them when?
On Friday.
Friday.
So, okay. So they could test on, they could test on Friday.
No, they don't get them until they go home on Friday.
It's a state-run program.
They get them on Friday.
Well, Doral gets them on Wednesday.
They test them at home anyway, so they could do the test on Friday, couldn't they? Isn't that what they do anyway?
So our testing day is Monday after the weekend.
Okay, but the testings are done at home. Am I correct? So they're going to give them to them on the 4th?
Yeah.
Friday?
Yeah.
Is there any reason why they couldn't test on Friday rather than Monday?
I think the cycle that we've set up and that our nurses have set up is testing Monday before they.
We do it every seven days. But, but it is five days enough time? Because I think we said earlier that they'll, they'll get it within five days.
Yeah, three to five days.
Three to five days. So if we test, let's say for argument's sake, they got back the 27th at midnight. They got tested on Monday. Okay, they know, that's great, you know, maybe they'll find out. But if they're going to get it in five days, why not also test them on the 4th? You'll know then. Or at least by Monday, you'll know whether the results have spiked up or not. Couldn't you just for that one week, you know, it's kind of a critical thing, we're, well, I should, critical, what it is. Is there any reason why we couldn't go just a little shorter that week, just to have the results from Monday or even Tuesday? Is there anything that would stop us from doing that, other than our normal protocol?
I, I think it's just hard to get 2,000 people in sync to do anything, right?
And it's only 60% of the kids, 60% of families have signed up for it. And we don't even, you know, because we don't ask them if they actually tested. You don't even know if people are testing.
Well, that's the same issue if they tested on the 7th, too. So that doesn't really matter. That, it's the same situation whether it's the 4th or the 7th.
Yep.
That's, that's going to be in case of the.
It's a consistent period of time, though.
Right.
Well, it's because we've chosen, we've chosen to do that. It doesn't mean that science says you need to wait seven days to test. We've just chosen to use that cycle. Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay. We could also choose to do it on Friday.
The reason, the reason we're testing on Monday, Michael, is because that's, that's our most difficult day. It's after the weekend. That's when our cases, cases have been highest.
Because they're getting it more on the weekend? Is that why we, because we want to incorporate the weekend into the test?
Yeah.
But if you're a close contact on the weekend, it's not going to show up until the middle of the week.
So, I mean, we can go around and around on this. I think, you know, our, our Board of Health has given, you know, I, you know, I'm just thinking about 10:15.
Yep.
Right? We have two, we have two presentations left after this, right? Our, our Board of Health has given us guidance. I feel like, you know, we've had at least one motion. Now we're on our second. I'm channeling my best Amy Lehman right now. Is there a motion on the table, you know?
There is a motion on the table.
All right, go ahead. Oh, shut up, sorry.
No.
I thought you were taking over the whole meeting. Go Doug.
I was going to say, so are we prepared to take a vote on the second motion, which we need to read again? Which, I'm not even sure you have kind of a formal motion because you were saying the same.
Do you want mine? If you can read my chickens.
Because I hijacked 90% of what you threw in there.
It's the blue on the, right.
Will the school committee vote to rescind the current face covering policy effective March 9th, 2022? And task the policy subcommittee to write a new policy stating masking is optional starting March 9th, 2022? Starting, excuse me, Wednesday, March 9th. I'm reading the motion. It's Monday. My mistake.
Doug would like to ask a clarifying question.
Just a clarifying question. So the, so initially, the eighth was to look at data. Now, we're not looking at data.
No, we'll still look at it on the eighth.
For?
So we, so we know what, what we'll have.
But we're, we're, we're saying, we're making masking a choice on the 9th.
Yes. Of course, if the data is, goes one way or another, we can decide to do something or not. But I think we're trying to get to a place where we're not moving the needle all the time.
Got it. Thank you.
But I don't think we should ever stop looking at data.
Are you thinking that's going to be hard to message?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I, that's what I thought I saw in your eyes.
Took us an hour to figure it out.
Yes, I mean, because there's no, you don't, I mean, this is the exact fear that the, that the community had, right? What we're saying acts. And then we come back, oh, data's high, we're pulling back.
Right. And without a definition of what data is, is it high?
Right. And so I'm just, again, just clarifying. I don't want to interrupt the motion.
To great clarity. The motion doesn't, my intent, nor does the motion read that we will revisit this on the 8th. We will hear a report on the 8th. And extemporaneously, if something goes wrong, we can, we have that liberty. But the motion doesn't say that we will revisit this on the 8th.
But I'm going to repeat my comment earlier. Then why don't we just do it on the 7th?
Right.
If that's the case. There's no difference between the 7th and the 9th in that case.
Well.
Because we'll still revisit it.
So when's the 7th?
Monday.
No, no, I know the date.
Okay, sorry.
Is it 8:00 AM or is it 10:00?
8:00 AM. 8:00 AM. We start Monday.
The start of the school.
So you don't wear masks on Monday.
Starting Monday.
Can we just vote on the motion on the table? Just debating like, and we do really have to remember what Anthony Choi recommended.
Understood. Yep. Yeah, we may not totally agree, but we should remember it. Yep.
So it's the Wednesday?
It's the Wednesday.
It's the Wednesday. Wednesday, March 9th.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay. It passes 4 to 3. I want to caution all of us that when we come back here on the 8th, we cannot have this debate again. We can't. We, we have got to stick with this and this has got to be it. The world's got to be, the sky has literally got to be falling for us to make a decision to change. It is not the right thing to do.
Right.
We have families who are very, very emotional about it. We heard it from a lot of people. I think we've done the right thing by putting the buffer in place, but we, I won't be a part of sitting back here and doing this again. I'm not doing it.
I don't think any of us want to, so.
And, and I couldn't agree with you more. Couldn't agree with you more. We have to, we have to draw a line in the sand that we make a decision and move forward. So part of our work sometimes is about developing a compromise between what one group of officials are telling us and one group of scientists and, and what the community needs and wants. And that's the difficulty that we're in sometimes.
Kevin?
But I couldn't agree with you more, Amy. But, Suzy, this, this has to, this has to draw to a conclusion.
Madam Chair, I have a policy I'd like to place on the table. Would you like to wait until the, or would you like to do it now?
Just do it.
So I move that the school committee place on the table, policy EBCFA, WPS face covering policy.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion.
Is that the one?
Just placing it on the table.
Right. So Amy, you can make your, you can.
You can make your moment.
But I would just want to say, that's the one that you read?
Correct.
That we got from MASC. Okay. So am I saying that now or when we discuss it?
When we discuss it.
Okay.
Which will actually be.
Well, we could make it part of the first.
We should make it, we should make it on the first. Let's, let's do that on the first.
Can I send you a letter then? Because I'm not going to be here on the first.
You may.
Okay. So when it's on the table, if we want changes, we bring it to the next meeting.
Yep. Or Amy's going to send hers because she won't be here.
I can't support a policy that separates vaccinated and unvaccinated recommendations. Then do you want to bring it up then? I can do it. You can just send it to me. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Anthony.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Anthony. Really appreciate it.
And thanks for all of the people in the studio who've stayed and listened.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Okay. Are we doing?
Do you want to vote on the motion?
Oh, crap. We didn't vote on the motion. My bad.
Which motion are we on now?
The, the policy.
Put the policy.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Wakefield Academy.
Estella, you with us?
Oh, God bless you.
Estella was out in the reception area, literally three hours ago. She was out there three hours ago.
She was physically here?
She was. I saw her.
God bless her. We might have to rain check.
Well, I was going to say if.
On Zoom, do we have Allison Hammer?
Yeah, I was going to say, let's.
Table this.
If she's willing to table. I mean, if she sat on here for three hours, though. Oh, there's Allison. This one we have.
I'm here.
Totally up to her, I guess.
Allison, thank you so much for being so patient.
Oh, Estella's out there. Oh, my goodness.
Someone's walking down the hall.
Oh, Allison, we may have to make you hold again.
Okay.
Because Estella's walking down the hall.
Can we, maybe, can we take it out of order?
Sure. Do we think Allison, Allison's how, well, go ahead, Allison.
I will be very short.
Go. Ready, go. Go ahead.
Is that, can I, am I going?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay. There's a slideshow called Grade 5 and 6 Spring Trips that was shared. Can someone pull that up or I can share my screen?
It's on right now. It's up there.
You've got it.
Oh, it's up. Oh, okay. I can't see that. Okay. Oh, now I can. All right, all right. So, thank you very much for having, having me tonight. I'm very excited to be here to ask for approval for our 5th graders and 6th graders to attend Camp Born Dale in 5th grade and Nature's Classroom in 6th grade. If we could go to the next slide, please. This is a quick detail for each of the trips. On the left-hand side, you see Camp Born Dale for the 5th graders. It is a two-day trip for three teams on Monday, May 9th and Tuesday, May 10th, returning. And then three other, the other three teams would go on Tuesday, May 10th and return on Wednesday, May 11th. So they have one day of overlap. So it's two school days for each of the 5th graders and one overnight. It takes place at, at Camp Born Dale in Plymouth, Massachusetts. The approximate cost is $185, which includes the cost of the trip as well as the bus transportation. And it is a, it's a fun and hands-on experience. It brings the history and the social study, the science, rather, curriculum alive for our kids. And there's a lot of team building activities as well. And the chaperones are teachers as well as parents. And there's also Camp Born Dale camp, Born Dale staff. Nature's Classroom is similar, but a little different in that it's a longer trip for our 6th graders. It is Monday, May 9th through Friday, May 13th. So it's five school days with four nights overnight. That takes place in Freedom, New Hampshire. The approximate cost is $450, which does include the price of the trip at the, the location at Nature's Classroom, as well as bus transportation. And it's an outdoor educational program with a focus on science and social, emotional learning, engineering skills, as well as team building. And the who that is involved, in addition to our students, are teacher chaperones and Nature's Classroom staff. If we could go to the next slide, please. So I know we just spent a lot of time talking about masks. We will be obviously following district guidelines at the time this, the trips take place.
I think we should talk about that.
As well as the guidelines of Nature's Classroom and Camp Born Dale. They have their own guidelines. Right now, their, their guidelines are very similar in that masks are worn indoors, but not while students are sleeping in their cabins. Currently, the mask guidelines are that on buses, they, the district guideline is that we wear masks on buses. So that will be followed as long as that's still the guideline. And we are at, the protocol is for a negative PCR test result within 72 hours of arrival and then a negative rapid test the morning of the trip. Both Camp Born Dale and Nature's Classroom have a registered nurse available on the site 24/7. And of course, any student or chaperone who develops symptoms and/or tests positive will, there'll be isolation as well as arrangements to help get students home with families. But again, we will be following all district guidelines at the time that the trips take place. And I realize that things are a little bit in flux right now. Unless the guidelines at Nature's Classroom or Camp Born Dale are not the same, we need to go abide by their, by their guidelines. If we could go to the next slide, please. So not all 5th and 6th graders are going to choose to go, although I do have some really promising numbers for parent interest. So we do have alternatives for kids, 5th graders. The alternative is two days of Camp Galvin. Mrs. DeSain runs that at the Galvin. Start of, start and end of the school day is the same. And activities in the past have been. Uh, start of, start and end of the school day is the same, and activities in the past have been inquiry-based interdisciplinary activities in science and social studies, and we're looking at a possible field trip on May tenth when both, all, all six of the teams would be sort of in transit. Um, so, uh, so that's a possibility as well. For our sixth graders, um, I'm sorry, it's five days of activities, I wrote four days of activities, I apologize for that typo. Five days of activities and trips run by Mrs. Pierce, one of our sixth-grade science teachers. Uh, the school day starts and ends at the regular time as usual, and activities in the past have included teacher-run activities at the school, local field trips, sometimes outside programs have come into, um, the school for presentation, and then other fun team-building activities. So we want to make sure that the options for kids who attend Camp Born Dale or Nature's Classroom, as well as those who choose not to go for any reason whatsoever, that everybody's having a, a good experience and a team-building and, and getting some real academic, um, enrichment to their, um, to their, their, the spring of their fifth and sixth-grade years. And then the next slide is actually parent, we did some parent surveys. Um, so fifth-grade interest, uh, the big question, what is the likelihood that your fifth grader would attend Camp Born Dale? And eighty-nine percent of the families would likely send their fifth grader, it's about two-thirds of the families uh, did respond to the survey, so eighty-nine percent of the families said they would likely send their fifth grader. And similarly, in this, the next slide, the sixth-grade family interest, uh, again, about two-thirds of the families responded to the survey, and eighty-nine point two percent of their families would likely send their sixth grader. Um, so there's a lot of family interest. We did have a sixth-grade Nature's Classroom parent information night last, uh, Thursday, because we thought we were going to be presenting on Tuesday, and so we wanted to, we let the parents know ahead of time. So we held it anyway, even though they knew that it hadn't been approved by school committee yet. Um, and the parents were very excited about, um, the possibility of bringing this to our students. Um, so I, I'm excited about the possibility of our fifth and sixth graders having this opportunity again. Um, you know, uh, as we all know, they have not had these types of opportunities in the past couple of years, and so teachers and parents and kids are very excited, kids have been asking me regularly how cabins work and all of those things, so they're very, very excited. Um, and I do hope that we can get approval, um, from school committee for these two really important trips for our fifth and sixth graders at the Galvin, and that's the end of the slideshow.
Can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
Allison, I just want to tell you that Nature's Classroom was the best parental experience I have with any of my kids in school. It was off-the-charts amazing, so I truly hope we can do it again this year.
That is great news, I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, these are two very fun, exciting trips. Um, my daughter missed out on the sixth-grade Nature's Classroom because they had moved it that year, um, because of COVID. Um, but these two trips, I still have great memories from being a kid and going on these trips, so I'm looking forward to these coming back.
So do we have a, do we have a motion?
I move the school committee approve the Galvin Middle School field trips to Camp Born Dale and Nature's Classroom as presented.
Second.
Motion made in second, and any discussion or any additional questions? I know I rushed to that vote, but I want to keep things moving along here. All right, all in favor? All opposed? Unanimous vote? Allison or Mrs. Hammer, thanks, thanks for coming, that was great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I ask a really quick question?
Yeah.
Because, yeah, uh, both, the fifth and sixth grade would like to propose that they go in the fall. Typically, Camp Born Dale is gone in the fall, and Nature's Classroom would like to come back in the fall. So my question is, if, if, you know, if we're able to, if that is able to happen, and we don't have dates or anything, we haven't, they have not explored the dates yet, is it something that I would do another presentation like this? Or would it be sending the, I, I just don't know.
Yes.
The process for that?
You have to get it, it has to be approved every time.
So the answer's here.
So come back, okay, I just wanted to make sure before I.
Love the idea.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much for your time, I'm really excited about this, and I really appreciate it, and I hope everybody has a great night.
And thank you, Allison, for bringing this back, thank you for bringing this back.
Yeah, and thank you for hanging in there.
You're very welcome, I'm excited about it.
Take care.
Estelle, next up, we have Estelle Berdick.
God bless you, Estelle, that's all I can say, I'm hanging out.
Please tell me you took a nap out there.
I did eat a couple cookies, I have to say. But luckily, I'm a night person, so it worked out.
So it works out.
Um, I didn't know if I could remove the mask for speaking here, or?
Is it? No?
No?
Never mind.
Okay.
Nope. Okay. Not totally.
Nope.
That's a, that's a, that's a W C A T, it's a town, it's a town building.
Okay. Um, all right, so obviously, I'm here to present on Wakefield Academy Extended Day Program. Um, I don't have the.
I got you, Estelle.
Yeah, great. Um, so what are we? Well, we are the extended day fee-based program for the Wakefield Public Schools for extended daycare for our students. Our before and after-school program serves pre-K to grade eight, and even our high school has a little bit with our mindfulness program, which is, um, provided with the grace of Suzanne Burns and Jill Kramer. Uh, they provide twice a week, and our students really enjoy, you know, getting their head in the game, so to speak, for our, uh, before their classes. We also hold a February and April vacation camp for our pre-K to grade four students, which is obviously what we're coming up against. Um, and we have a very comprehensive summer program, which includes camp enrichment and academic opportunities for our students. What makes Wakefield Academy unique is our one hundred and fifteen staff are predominantly made up of Wakefield Public School employees. We have, um, teachers, we have ISPs, instructional support people, as well as high school interns. The biggest benefit is that it gives our, um, adult staff the opportunity to make and supplement their income, and it provides our high school students with a real-life job experience. They have to apply, they interview, you know, they're held to a schedule, um, they have responsibilities in the program, and our little ones, of course, think they walk on water. So they just absolutely, it's, it's like really watching the paparazzi when a high school student comes in. It's so cute, the kids just flock to them. We also have our MEKO students who join us due to their transportation differences, because obviously, there is the one bus, um, picking up from the different schools. So we have students that are, you know, hanging around, so to speak, and instead of having them just sit there in wait for their bus, they get to join Wakefield Academy, they play with their peers, they're engaged, they're enjoying themselves, then the bus comes and, you know, they get to finally go home. One of the big positives of this is that our MEKO students at the middle school actually get to take place and, and take part in our clubs and programs, because they run from two-thirty to three-thirty, and their bus doesn't pick up until three-thirty. So they're really able to make friendships, find other kids of the same interests, um, and things to do, so they get to have that opportunity as well, and we all know that, you know, middle school can be a little awkward. Uh, most importantly, we provide a social and emotional place for our students to really grow and enjoy each other and get that, that stressless time together. Our extended day population is huge. So, so if you think about, um, you know, we've just gone through two years of COVID. We had an extremely truncated version last year. Um, and we have not only bounced back, but we actually beat our pre-COVID numbers. So our families have welcomed us back and are very enthusiastic. So we have seven hundred and twenty-eight pre-K to grade eight students. Our monthly registration on average is around five hundred and sixty-three students are enrolled in any given time. We include all our schools from pre-K, Doyle, and all element, all, that should say four elementary schools. I only read this like nine thousand times, and I still missed it. Um, so that should be four elementary schools, in case you're wondering where the other two disappeared, and our Galvin Middle School, for a total of six schools. Our enrichment programs is something that really makes us unique. Um, this is in addition to our regular extended day program. So this gives students the opportunity to come into Wakefield Academy in an enrichment program of their desire, their choice, uh, what their interest is. They do not have to be a Wakefield Academy member. Um, so this brings in another four hundred and eighty-eight students into our program. They stay with Wakefield Academy, um, for our elementary and, um, preschool level, they'll stay with Wakefield Academy until their program starts, which is on average fifteen to thirty minutes. They go to their program, it can be a Wakefield Academy member student joining the program, or it can be someone who's not part of our Wakefield Academy. So they really get to mix with their peers, it's really a school community, it's a building effort with them, building relationships and enjoying and finding other kids that have the same interests as they do. Our Galvin Middle School, as you can see by the chart, oh, you're too quick for it. Sorry, I just wanted to explain the graph. The Ga, the Galvin Middle School, as you can see, at thirty-two percent, has the highest participation rate with our clubs and our programs. Um, we had a hundred and fifty students, um, attend our clubs this past session, which is amazing for a middle school and what that does for them. Now you can go. So as I mentioned earlier, Wakefield Academy has summer opportunities. We have two main programs and then our enrichment. We have our Summer Warriors, which is our academic piece to our summer program, and then we have our Summer Camp, and then we have enrichment. We also have a pre-K piece, but I'll talk about that in a second. These programs, our academic program runs in the morning, our camp, parents can choose, morning, afternoon, or both. Our enrichments run in the afternoon, usually it runs the same four days as the camp does, as the academic thing, um, program does, Monday through Thursday. Our providers, um, really give our students in the summer such great choices that they can enjoy. Our Summer Warriors program, to break that out a little bit more, is our academic, um, support, it's our learning loss program. Given the last two years of COVID, this has been critical to giving our students who are struggling the boost that they need to get them ready for September, um, and try to limit the learning loss as much as possible. We focus on our four major curriculum areas with reading, writing, math, and science. This program covers our rising first through fifth-grade students. It's data-driven, this is our second year of this program to cover that two-year learning loss. Um, the data-driven invitations are based on our data assessments, which are our eye-ready diagnostic, um, which is our math data, our reading benchmark assessment data for our ELA, and our Lexia, uh, Rapid, um, Literacy Screener, again, for our ELA. And then we finally, once all that is broken out, we then go to the principals and the teachers to get their input and feedback, um, to ensure that the students that are being invited, invited, um, are the ones that are in the most need.
Estelle, do you mind if I stop you there?
Sure.
Um, will we be expanding the number of students that will be able to participate in that, in that particular program this year, just knowing the extent of the learning loss that, that we're seeing?
Yes, our goal is to expand it, um, obviously, we're restricted by the number of teachers we can recruit.
Right.
But I've been a bit of a bulldog on that, so, you know, I usually don't let go. Um, but we are planning on expanding it, last year, it was rolled out really, um, close to the summer, so that made it trickier to invite too many students, because we didn't know exactly what the support, you know, that we'd be able to put in for them. Um, this year, however, you know, we're gonna, we have a, um, bigger head start, and we do anticipate inviting many more students, um, to the program.
Great.
Can I have a question? So it's invite-only? Can parents opt to pay for their program?
For, I'm sorry, say that again.
For Summer Warriors, is it invite-only, or can parents register and pay for that program?
For this year, um, it is invitation-only, because we think that we'll fill all spots that we possibly could and more, um, based on that invitation. And we want to include as many students as we possibly can that are struggling.
Do you invite IEP students that have, um, um, extended school year on there?
The IEP students with extended school year on, um, listed, we find really benefit fully from the extended school year program, because that is tailored to their precise needs and support, and in a, a smaller, um, either one-on-one or small-group setting, so it, it provides them with a better support system than I would say, um, this program would provide.
Okay, thank you.
Um, we have a sample of what the schedule for the academic piece would look like. Um, we did the same thing last year. Uh, one thing I want to do point out, want to point out is our science block was a huge hit. It literally kept the kids coming. Um, it, it was absolutely amazing, if you stopped a child, you know, their first thing is, oh, yeah, I'll, I'll do the reading, I'll do the math, when do we do science? And we're like, yeah, we keep that at the end. So you can't skip out. Um, so that was really a huge draw, it really excited them. I mean, if you can get a bunch of kids in from recess in the summer, you, you know the program's good. So that was a huge draw for our students, and to get them that science experience, which is usually, um, is something that is, you know, not as, not as on the radar as much as, you know, our ELA and our math, um, but the science really captured them. Our budget analysis for our Summer Twenty Twenty-Two, for our Summer Warriors, um, you'll notice the breakdown, we have our teachers and their support personnel, every classroom, um, would have an instructional support person that's necessary for trying to get the students to be tailored to as much as we possibly can and supported, as much as we can. Our science program, um, as I mentioned, last year knocked it out of the park. They provided all supplies, the individualized, um, pieces that they had, the consumables, you know, it was just really over the top, um, and that was provided by Wicked Cool Science. And I have to say, they, they picked it up and ran with it in a very last-minute process. So this year, we expect it to be even better. And it's all, um, based on our Massachusetts state standards for science.
Can I ask a question on this slide?
Mm-hmm.
It's two classrooms per grade, so that's ten classrooms? But there's eleven teachers, so.
Oh, um, we have one, we have one team of teachers that split, um, due to their other obligations. So they split the classrooms, so one will do one week, one will do the other week.
Oh, okay.
So that's why we have the odd number, I know.
How many, um, students per class?
Um, it varies depending on the invitations that go out. Uh, for example, last year, our two-to-three classrooms were our highest populated, so they had twenty-three students per class, which was very high for what we're expecting.
Yep.
Um, other classrooms had twelve students, but on range, it was between that eleven and twenty-three. Again, we didn't have the time to ramp it up as much as we would like.
Is there a max, though, that you would accept? Would you go up to thirty?
No.
Okay. I didn't know if you'd go by the.
No, because then I'd have teachers quitting.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure.
They'd see that roster and that'd be the end. Oh, sorry, remember that vacation, I had to go on. Um, so yes, no, we, we, the twenty-three was really our max.
Okay.
Um, for being able to reach the kids.
And so, so this is completely funded by grants?
Yes.
So was the grant for larger than a hundred and eighteen, or do they just give you whatever the costs are? Is that how the grant works?
It was really based on the cost.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Um, so our Summer Camp is another piece of our program, where we reach those kids that, you know, they're not looking for an academic support, um, they don't need that support, um, through the summer, and they want that real true camp experience. They want to be with their friends, they want to play camp activities, they want to do camp crafts, you know, they want to run around like crazy, they want to do arts and crafts, they just really want to have fun and enjoy their summer. This gives the parents. This gives the parents a chance to enroll their children in the camp, not have to worry that their child is safe, secure, in a good place, and not feel guilty because their kids are usually complaining when they come to pick them up, especially if there are half-day ones, like, not yet, we were just gonna, you know. So it's, it's really a joy to see the children enjoying that piece of our program. Our enrichment, our camp goes only till grade four, but our enrichment is K to eight. So this really reaches our middle school students, you know, who want something to do but don't want to be put in camp because they're too big. So this gives them the opportunity to challenge themselves with a new activity and new program. You know, for example, you know, we have our stop-motion animation. They become filmmakers. It's amazing. Or they'll do coding, you know, chess, or, you know, other activities that really challenge their problem-solving and strategic thinking. So that really brings in those students who want something a little more. And we literally have something for everyone in that program. If you want cooking, you want art, you want sports, we have it. So our last piece of our summer program is our pre-K Wakefield Academy and E S Y collaboration. This is where we pull in pre-K students that register with Wakefield Academy, but they'll be participating with the preschool students in the E S Y program. This gives the opportunity to beef up those classes and give them friends from around the district that they can play with and enjoy. It builds more of a community, you know, little tiny little buggers. And they just really have fun and they see their friends, you know, either from the Doyle or they see their friends from the neighborhood. Because this program, while Doyle students get first dibs, this program is not limited to just Doyle students. So they really get to, you know, meet friends around the town. And it gives them that opportunity to really enjoy themselves. We have a camp program. When the E S Y curriculum piece ends, they then can join us in our pre-K camp. We truncate the hours on that, so we end at three. That's because these little ones are exhausted by then. They can't take another step, you know, we run them ragged. So they just need to go home and, you know, take a break, take a nap, you know, and chill out. So, you know, we, we don't want to keep them there till five. And I wanted to show you one last picture. And these are our students from last year that really enjoyed our science program. And as you can see, their little smiling faces are irresistible. And it was just something that, you know, was really a delight. And to be able to offer our struggling students this opportunity, you know, was really, was really satisfying.
Estelle, I have heard nothing but amazing things about this program. It's a showpiece, so kudos to you. I know you don't do it alone, but you do a lot of it.
No, I don't. I could not do this alone.
I've heard nothing but incredible reviews of it, so it's fantastic, thank you.
Thank you so much. I greatly appreciate that.
Yeah, just a really brief comment. You know, it's particularly exciting for me to hear this way back in the day when this was first being proposed, when I first got on the committee, many superintendents ago. You know, it was this little idea that was kind of borne out, and we had volunteers. Like, I was making brochures and doing different things like that.
Yeah.
So to see where it's gone over the years, and particularly your influence and leadership as well, I mean, this is incredible. And I agree with Mr. Boudreaux, like, you know, even social media, like, the amount of people that talk about this on a regular basis. I know they're really looking forward to the summer programming and those sorts of things. So to everybody involved, it's just, it's, it's an amazing program. And it's particularly exciting for me to see it just, from what I know it was, which was nothing, to what it is now, this almost year-long experience in both Extended Day and enrichment. Kudos to everybody, it's awesome.
Thank you. Well, I'll give a shout-out to Trudy Connolly because she is my right-hand lady. And I couldn't do all of this without her. You know, I didn't want to torture her by having her sit beside me.
She's probably glad now.
She's lying in bed. She'll be watching reruns of this one. But yeah, she's been, you know, extremely instrumental in assisting me in making this program what it is. So I have, I have to share the credit there, so.
Do we need a motion around this, or are we good?
I think we're good.
Great.
Good.
Awesome, Estelle.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for staying up with us, too.
Thank you, guys, for staying awake for the presentation. Very much appreciated.
So one, one comment before I pass it off. So when we talk about, you know, vertically extending the school day and kind of that work, Estelle just kind of just blew by this. But, you know, we're, we're trying to provide support in the afternoon. And when we think about it, when you say, Kevin, compared to where it was, even where this program was a year ago, it has grown dramatically to provide academic support in the afternoon. And we talk about growing, growing the school day vertically and then horizontally, you know, extending the school year. You know, Estelle has been instrumental in kind of creating and hiring people from scratch and developing these programs. She's worked very closely with Kara last summer on the accelerated, on the acceleration grant, you know. So I think this is a testament to her work and everyone that's working with her. So, thank you. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Yep. Sleep well, Estelle.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda, we have the calendar, but I don't know if we are prepared to vote. We were going to maybe push that one more meeting. I don't, I know there was some discussion about not pushing it beyond March first. But do we know if there's been any decisions around Election Day?
It's been set.
Secretary of State has set election for September sixth. Tuesday, September sixth is the primary. And Tuesday, November eighth is the general election. So the date has been set.
Tom, what is the primary for?
So the primary, this, this year is, is a big election year. It's, it's the governor, all the constitutional officers, state representatives, state senators, sheriffs. It's a big election year.
So it is nine of eleven. Are we prepared to have this discussion right now, or do we want to punt this to the March first? I know there were some people feeling strongly about needing to make this decision for families. I think we're early enough and the options are pretty clear. Either start on the sixth or start on the seventh. But I'm not sure. My preference would be to not have this debate tonight, but that's, you know, I'm willing to. If anybody feels strongly that we need to do this tonight.
Who does the chair's prerogative to, to so guide us?
Okay, then I'm, I'm going to say that we put this on for, for March first. I think this, this requires some good discussion, and I know I don't have it in me. And we still have, you know, ten or fifteen more minutes of this meeting to kind of finish everything out. So I'm going to go ahead and we're going to table that, and we'll, we will vote on that on March first. Okay. Christine?
So real quick, we have two gifts. Two hundred and fifty dollars. We'll take them one at a time, Tom, or together. Two hundred and fifty dollars from the Woodville School PTO. To purchase books chosen by the Wakefield L A D D Committee. LAD Committee. Which is the Learn About Differences and Disabilities Committee.
I was on a different page, my apologies. So I move the school committee, except with gratitude, a donation of two hundred and fifty dollars from the Woodville School PTO for the Woodville Library to purchase books as chosen by the Wakefield LAD Committee.
Second. Motion made in second, end discussion. See none, all in favor. Okay, passes unanimously.
Great. The second gift is three thousand dollars from the Wakefield High School Girls Basketball Booster Club. It stipends for two assistant basketball coaches.
I move the school committee, except with gratitude, a donation of three thousand dollars from the Wakefield Memorial High School Girls Basketball Booster Club for the purpose of providing stipends for two assistant basketball coaches for the twenty-one, twenty-two season.
Second.
Motion made in second, end discussion. See none, all in favor. That passes unanimously as well. Christine, that's all, that's everything, right?
Thank you.
Subcommittee reports, we did not meet last week for finance and facilities. We do have a meeting this coming Thursday where we will be meeting with all three of the school committee liaisons, or three of the four, excuse me, three of the four finance committee liaisons to the school committee. Labor, Tom?
So last week, we had two meetings. One was the, began negotiations with representatives from Unit C, the paraprofessionals. So we have begun that process for a successor collective bargaining agreement. And progress will continue to be provided to the committee as, as the time moves along. We've also set a calendar for meetings with Unit C through what we hope will be a timely process through the end of April. So we've got a, once we hit the beginning of March, we've got a pretty aggressive timetable with Unit C through the end of April. So continue to obviously keep the committee prized as the time goes along. We also had a meeting with Unit A representatives last Wednesday afternoon, as, as the community knows and the public knows. And so we, we will be regrouping to come up with some feedback, some thoughts, and reconnect with the Unit A leadership about what our next steps might be. And Labor met this morning, I apologize, Labor met this morning, yeah.
We did meet, Suzy.
Okay.
Students' services.
Policy.
We didn't meet either, but we're scheduled, the next meeting is on the twenty-eighth.
The twenty-eighth, right. Mike, do you guys have a next meeting scheduled?
Tomorrow.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Missed that, okay. Speaking of next, next meetings, we've referred to the meeting that's March first. The sole agenda for that meeting should be budget. But now we just added calendar. But, but I think that's okay.
And.
And a COVID update.
And, oh, and, I don't think we'll do a, we won't have much of a COVID update on the first. We'll just be two, two days back from vacation. We said that we were going to do that on the eighth.
No, some policy, the policy stays on the table.
I've got the dates confused, yeah.
So, yep, so we got, we've got budget, we've got the COVID policy that you just laid on the table, and we've got the calendar. We're going to keep it to those three things because we need to really focus on budget.
And just to give you an update, the budget packets will be sent out by the end of next week.
Can I ask a question before we go on to the next thing? Doug, question for you. Some of the parents, when they were talking about, when they were sharing their stories tonight, were mentioned about on the twenty-eighth, sending their kids to school with no masks on. I don't know what's in place now for, if a kid goes to school without a mask on. I just want parents to be aware, if they do send their students to school without a mask, what is the ramifications of that?
You know, I, I think we haven't had, I know some schools where students have recently, just in Wayland, students tried to protest and were sent home by not wearing masks. You know, I'll talk with, we'll talk with principals tomorrow.
Okay.
And I, I don't know what the recourse will be. If everyone's in masks, the expectation would be that, that they continue to wear masks until we transition.
Okay, might just be something to keep on the radar because it sounded, and here, just here tonight, I've heard it in other places, too, the.
Yeah, I know, Alex, Alex made a point. And, and, you know, I think we're going to, we'll touch base with parents that were here and, and, you know, we know Alex well and we speak pretty regularly, so we'll just touch base and figure out how to support.
Okay.
Hopefully, the shortened buffer period might help that.
I, I think that it will. I think, you know, having, having the date, knowing what's coming. You know, we'll work with principals on this as well.
Okay, thanks.
All right, comments, Amy, Lehman?
Okay.
I wasn't going to have one, but that brought up a question. A, I would suggest that people don't do that. I think it's seven school days, and I do wonder if maybe some communication, we can be creative about getting out the word about the day that masks are, you know, what we just passed. And maybe we can, you know, have good communication about that. But it's seven school days, we're almost there, and, you know, let's, let's, let's keep our attention on that.
Amy?
First, I want to thank all the parents that shared their stories tonight. Like I had said before, that a lot of them were very moving and, you know, it's hard to listen to people's stories that have been struggling for the past two years. So I just want to thank everybody for sharing them and showing their raw emotion about them. Also want to thank the group. I know we don't all agree with what happened, but I think we had a good discussion and everybody shared their input. So I just wanted to thank everybody for that. And then also, everybody that spoke tonight, thank you for staying up late with us. That's it.
Mike?
I just wondered if this is a new record?
It might be.
I don't know if they go back. No?
No. Depends on how far back you want to go. Eleven o'clock, that's nothing.
I was talking about some of my work. He said Lexington's school board was meeting until two in the morning on this subject, so.
Can't even imagine. Any other comments there?
No.
Steven?
Yeah, just to sort of echo the, the thanks for, for everyone just sharing, you know, their stories. And, and we know that it's hard. And we know that patience has been, you know, at the top of everyone's, like, the need that we all need patience. And so not only the parents tonight, but also the ones that wrote. The, I can't appreciate enough how much, when people communicate, whether I, I agree or disagree, it's, it's a discourse, dialogue. It's that partnership that we're here for. And so I would just encourage sort of more of it because it's welcome and needed.
Tom?
I wholeheartedly agree with everything that, that my colleagues have said. Again, thank, thanking parents for hanging in there, for providing good, good feedback, regardless of the, whatever side of the issue that you were on. We got lots and lots of feedback on both sides, and it's a difficult decision to make. So we just appreciate, appreciate all of that. And certainly thanks to the Teachers Union and for Vice President Martin of the Teachers Union to come and speak to us tonight and share, you know, the teachers' impact and the teachers' feedback. They are not an insignificant part, they are a major part of our capacity to provide education every day in a very difficult couple of years. So just really thanks, thanks to the community, thanks to Wakefield for, for making this, making this happen.
Suzy, can I ask one, and one more thing? Even though the vote today was four to three, it, it isn't a true indicator of how aligned we are as a group. You know, I think the difference in a four to three and a seven to zero was a very small margin. And I, I think, I'm, I enjoy working with all of you. I think we have great discourse, great conversations, not discourse. We listen to each other's opinions. So I, you know, I hope the public doesn't take this as a rift because it couldn't be farther from the truth with this group. It's a, it's a pleasure working with all of you. Thank you.
Yeah, so I, I would say more of the same. I've had, in the last seven days, and hours, and hours of conversation on this topic with people I disagree with, with people who I thought would be, land one place and was in a different place. And it's been an incredible learning experience. And, and really, even as I walked in here, I hadn't made my mind up as to where I was going to land. I do think we landed in a, in a place that I'm comfortable with as long as we don't try to revisit this. And so I'm, I'm hopeful that that's, that's how this is going to play out. And I, and I think, you know, it was the parents that showed up here, not just the, the ones I spoke, but the people who stood here for hours listening. It says a lot, we got a lot of emails, as you guys said. And I really appreciate just people who took time to reach out to me and send me notes and check in and have phone conversations with me while I processed. There's something that Tom coined, but I've really latched on to, which is that the idea that just because we didn't land in the place that you wanted us to does not mean that we did not hear you. I did a lot of listening, I think we all have done a lot of listening, a lot of reading, a lot of thinking. And, and all of the people I spoke with helped kind of form my, my decision and my approach tonight. And so I appreciate kind of the respectful way that most people shared their feedback. And, and I think it is a testament to the fact that we can have civil conversations about tough issues. So, thanks, everyone. And with that, we'll go ahead and make a motion to end the meeting.
I move the school committee adjourn its meeting of Tuesday, February fifteen, twenty twenty-two.
Second. Motion made in second, end discussion. Second. Motion made in second. End discussion. Seeing none, all in favor. Unanimous. Have a good evening, everybody.
Good night, all.
Thank you.